They're universal principles in terms of resource use, toxins, and also creating a beautiful natural site that could be the final resting place for people who chose this kind of burial. So what we're planning at San Luis Rey in our cemetery expansion is about an acre meadow, grassland with native oak trees, much like what you would find, say, in Yosemite Valley or that kind of a setting. And within that acre, then people will be able to choose if they prefer this kind of burial to be buried in a meadow versus in a concrete box.
I am, I am. You know, we're, I think we're all getting sensitized to this, don't you agree, Andy? That people are trying to tread a little more softly on this earth of ours, even at the last stage of life.
Yes, especially when it comes to burial, a lot of people are looking for an alternative. And cremation for many years has been that alternative, but they're looking for other options, so it's becoming very popular.
Well, I like, now, you, this, you actually belong to a sort of like a coalition of people who consult on green burials, is that correct?
Yes, there's a movement that's picking up in the United States, and the Green Burial Council is coordinating the interest at cemeteries and mortuaries and customers around the country who would like to look for an alternative.
Well, I can, it make, it makes sense. I mean, we have all seen these cemeteries in a terrible state of disrepair, and you go look at this and think of the expense of the headstones, let alone the mausoleum. What are some of the alternatives for a green burial if a person so chooses?
Well, green burial really goes back to a very natural, traditional burial, much like what was practiced at the mission 200 years ago during the mission times. Burials in that time were very much followed the customs in Europe, where people would be buried in a shroud or in a simple wooden box of some kind. Today, of course, the traditional cemetery today is usually concrete tombs in the ground or, as you've mentioned earlier, mausoleum. So, green burial does not use any kind of toxins, there's no preservation of the body, and they're buried in a simple grave in a natural setting. Ours will be, once we develop our area, our cemetery will be what's called a hybrid cemetery or a hybrid burial ground, because we do have traditional burial options for people available as well.
I asked earlier, are there limitations doctrinally, if you will, for the church?
Not at all.
Yeah, not, okay, so that's one. And what about the law? I mean, there are some regulations and laws, in fact, in the disposition of a person.
There are no laws that require embalming.
Really?
And so what a green burial is, you don't put formaldehyde into the body, it's just refrigeration and then straight to the ground. Also, there are no laws that require vaults to go into the ground, that's a cemetery requirement, not a law.
I see.
So, green burial not only is ecologically friendly, we don't put metals or synthetics or chemicals into the ground.
I see, that, it just makes sense to me. I, you know, you're thinking over, well, you must have seen really amazing tribal rituals around death in Brazil, for goodness sake. That's kind of straight from ashes to ashes.
That's right. And it's interesting that you mention that. In traditional cultures, death is a part of the cycle.
We've forgotten that.
It's not something to deny, and, you know, of course, back in the '60s, one of the greatest books in psychology written in America by Ernest Becker was called The Denial of Death. And we built a whole culture around denying death, and therefore, and our burial practices certainly reflect that, we don't want the body to decompose, we want it to be not ever touching natural elements in the ground.
It's almost phoronic, you know? I'm going to be, I'm going to approach the next life in perfect shape, excuse me.
But, you know, I think gradually society, our society is changing with the much greater acceptance now of cremation as an option, natural burial really is the next step.
Right, well, so many services came, it seemed to me, out of the blue, whether it was the Neptun Society and Ashes at Sea, and people seem to be picking up on this, they really are seeking alternatives. Now, it's important that people know, Andy, how to get in contact with you if they are thinking that this is maybe something that is the best statement of their life, to go out gently, if you will. Is there a place where people can contact you?
They can reach us through the greenburialcouncil.org.
Greenburialcouncil.org, okay. Oh, good, we have it up on the screen.
Well, at the San Luis Rey Mission, which would serve people well beyond Southern California, we're getting inquiries from around the country, at sanluisrey.org.
San Luis Rey.org. Now, prior you were telling me that the mission is the 18th in our string of missions.
Twenty-one.
Is this going to, is, do you think this is going to grow, an impact in terms?
Well, we're fortunate in that we have land at the mission. We have 56 acres at San Luis Rey, and we'll be developing some of those other acres for other uses, but because we do have space, we can expand our cemetery, and of course, North San Diego County 20 years ago was the fastest growing part of the country, so there are many, many residents locally that are not served by any other cemetery.
Yeah, how do you address cultural traditions, though? Because there are differences, there truly are. An Orthodox Jew is going to be really constrained in the place that they can be buried, and I should think that a person who is a practicing Catholic is also going to have certain requirements that they're going to ask for. How do you find that, Ray? Is this something we consult with the families about, what their wishes are?
Certainly, and even our parish at Mission San Luis Rey, which grew from about 400 families 25 years ago to 4,700.
Wow, good of you.
Is itself a multicultural place. We have no majority culture in the parish, so we have people, we, one of our large groups, of course, are people from Samoa, and they have their own really amazing rituals.
Oh, sure.
And we're open to all, anything that we can provide within the context of what we have there at the mission, we're open to anyone who would like to be buried on these special and historical grounds.
The cemetery within the grounds is non-denominational.
I see, yeah, I did ask that question, I wanted to get to that point. There are really no obstacles if someone thinks this is the appropriate alternative for them.
Not at all.
The mission's a national historic landmark.
I see.
And because of that and our beliefs, the cemetery is open to all faiths.
Now, green burial can be truly simple, then, as basic as cardboard box?
A cardboard box or beautiful shroud, any of these options are available.
And I must ask about the cost, this is, it seems to me this ought to be less expensive than some of the more elaborate burials.
That depends on which green burial project and how much land is available. Our cemetery at the mission, the reason why they're extending the cemetery is to raise an endowment to take care of the mission, so any of the proceeds are going to help towards that cause. So it's not necessarily less at the mission than it may be at other locations.
This is a wonderful thing to talk about and think about. Unfortunately, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guests in the second half of our program, Andy Martinez, President of the Santa Fe Cemetery Services, and Friar James Lockman, Executive Director of Mission San Luis Rey de Frances in Oceanside. Now, in the first half of our show, Hilda Carrabas from Forest Lawn Memorial Parks and Mortuaries was also our guest. And now, it is time for our feature on Aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics or information that pertains to senior citizens. Today, let's look at some things to do when planning a funeral, whether it's yours or a loved one's. Shop around in advance. Compare prices from at least two funeral homes. Remember, you can provide your own casket or urn. Ask for a price list. The law requires funeral homes to give you a written price list for products and services. Resist pressure to buy goods and services you don't really need or want. And avoid emotional overspending. It is not necessary to have the fanciest casket or the most elaborate funeral to properly honor a loved one. Recognize your rights. Laws regarding funerals and burials vary from state to state, and so it's a smart move to know which goods or services the law requires you to purchase and which are optional. Apply the same smart shopping techniques you use for any other major purchase. You can cut costs by limiting the viewing to one day or one hour before the funeral. And by dressing your loved one in a favorite outfit instead of costly burial clothing, plan ahead because you can save money. It allows you to comparison shop without time constraints if you plan ahead, and have an opportunity for family discussion, and it will lift some of the burdens from your family. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. Please give us a call, the number's there on your screen, (213) 252-4088. That's (213) 252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson, for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move along with, because of, and in spite of, the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
L.A. City View, Channel 35, your city, your channel.
Rosendahl, the Director of Specials, Councilmember, LeBange, excuse your rise at 10:05. I'm answering questions. I'm happy to be here at 10:00 AM, being a chief, so.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 26, 2010. We're here in the John F. R. Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Want to thank Ray Sun and Shine's class, Political Science Class, from CSU Fullerton for being here. Thank you, let's give them a round of applause and thank them for coming here today. They were hoping to sit in, but I know we have a capacity crowd, so they can watch us on television. Again, want to welcome all of the folks that are here in Council Chambers today. We also have a spillover room in the Board of Public Works, where we will have this meeting for folks who are unable to be in the chambers due to our fire marshal and the capacity for this room.
As well as the forecourt.
And also in the forecourt, we have audio hookups, I know for many people who are out there in the forecourt, so we welcome all of you again to Council Chambers. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 for each of these meetings, and rebroadcast in the evening on Channel 35 through the city's cable system. We also are available four other ways, as I mentioned before, in person here, next through two of our city's remote facilities, in San Pedro City Hall and in Van Nuys City Hall. If you live closer there, you can catch these meetings live and also testify from those locations via teleconferencing and video teleconferencing. And we also are available through the internet. We are streamed live on our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, and we archive all the past council meetings there for your convenience as well. Usually, council phone is available through your telephone. We've had a technical difficulty with that since last week, and it should be up and running by next month. We need to replace that system, but in the future, (213) 621-CITY, you can call in through your phone and listen into the council meetings as well. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for these meetings. Those are posted in city facilities as well as online at lacity.org, and they are here today. If you'd like to be heard on any items, we have speaker cards in the back, and just hand those to the sergeants-at-arms, we'll be sure to include that. Any of the items that have already had a public hearing do not automatically trigger public cards, but a council member can reopen that to hear further from the public. On items that have not yet had a hearing, then they have automatic triggers for any card that is put in to hear from the public today. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comment. That's for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city, and if you'd like to be heard on that, again, just fill out a speaker card, put "public comment" in upper right corner, and we'd be happy to hear you for two minutes. We have a podium up there and a code of conduct for all of our speakers, and again, we thank all the members of the public and our city workers who are here today as well, especially those from our Department of Water and Power. We appreciate the work that you do. We do have five members now, and that constitutes, sorry, we have 10 members, we're still missing five, but we do have a quorum, so Mr. Clerk, please call the roll, we'll begin the meeting.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weiser, Corret, Kakkori, Labange, Parks, Pay, Reyes, Roswell, Smith, West, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum as president.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Zine seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Corret seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. We each Tuesday salute our flag. I can ask everybody to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join me, please place your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If we can run through today's agenda, please. Colleagues, if you'd like to direct your attention to our agenda and any of the items that you wish to call special for today's meeting, first items, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue item 3 to November 30.
Is there any objection to continuing item 3 until the 30th of November? Seeing none, so ordered.
There's also requests to continue item 8 to November 9.
All right, any objection to continuing number 8 until the 9th? If not, let's go ahead and do that as well.
There is a request to continue item 14 to November 9 as well.
Number 14 till the 9th, any objection to continuing that? If not, we'll go ahead and continue that till the 9th.
And the last item, there's a request to refer item 31 back to the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee.
All righty, if there is no objection to referring item 31 to the Arts and Parks Committee and Mr. Labange, then we will do that as well. Thank you, Ms. Han is here as well. We have a full complement. Mr. Reyes and Mr. West are excused today, just to remind folks, we do have all 13 members. That leaves us with numbers 1 through 12, I'd like to call 11 special. Other specials, colleagues, 1 through 12? If not, let's go ahead then.
We're going to have 12.
Okay, number 12, Mr. Rosendahl. If there are no other specials, that's 1 through 10. Mr. Labange would like to call number 1 special.
I'm referring something back, 30.
If there are no other special items, Ms. Han?
I'd like to continue item 3.
We continued it already, till November 30th, we continued it. We got you covered. Let's go ahead and please open the roll on the balance of items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved, next items, please.
Items 13 through 35, or items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration, those are before us, 13 through 35. Do we have cards on any of these?
There are cards on items 26 and 32.
Okay, we will call those special for cards in the public, 31 for Mr. Alak, oh, we already referred that to Arts, Parks, Mr. Alakon, there's no objection to that. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, 25.
All right, I like your tie. 25, Mr. Cardenas, and Ms. Han, did you want to call one special?
I was actually going to continue 32 until Friday.
32? Is there any objection? There are some cards here, did you want to, for folks, the...
There's a lot of cards?
We have...
Why? Do we know what the...
Eight cards? Is there any objection to continuing, Ms. Han has moved to continue, sorry. No, 32, I'm sorry, Ms. Han, I pulled the wrong cards, there's just one card. You want to continue 32?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead, without objection, continue 32 till Friday, and Dr. Williams, we will keep your card in for Friday. Are there specials? 20 is available, Mr. Labange. All right, sold to Mr. Labange. Any other specials?
I guess you put the taxi on consent, he's... Let me check.
Let's go ahead and open the roll then on the balance, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, those are approved, next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item 36 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
I'll call 36 special. Go to the next items.
Items 37 through 40, or items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, any objection to consideration? If not, let's go ahead, and those are before us, do we have cards on any of these?
We have cards on item 39.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards in the public.
37 as well, no?
And 37 now.
37, okay, we'll call that special as well, that leaves 38 and 40. Anybody wishing to call 38 or 40 special? If not, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Oh, sorry, Ms. Alakon, 38? So, number 40 then, we'll take on consent. Mr. Labange, did you?
It's a point of information for the clerk, 39 and 40 to say?
39...
Two separate motions.
We've got cards on 39, but we can go with 40 unless somebody wishes to call it special. to call it special.
Are they different?
They're two different motions. One is about the removing the sunset clause and one extends the sunset date.
Should we both call them special?
Sure, we'll call them special for you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
We'll hold those both as well. Ms. Alakon?
Number nine, I thought I.
Okay, no problem. Let's go back and reconsider then number nine. If there's no objection, please open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We'll call that special for Mr. Alakon. Okay, Mr. Rosenthal is proposing number twelve on consent. Is there any objection to that? It's a taxi item. If there's no objection to, sorry, Mr. Alakon, would you like to call that special then yourself?
I thought we had an amendment coming.
I don't know, just dealing with the motions on the floor.
This is the taxi item?
Yes, the taxi item. Mr. Rosenthal withdrew his specials. Anybody else who wishes to call it special?
I'll call it special.
Okay, then we'll call that special. We'll recognize you first, Mr. Rosenthal, as chair of the committee, and then Mr. Alakon. All right, that will, Spence, with, we'll go to our general public comment and then we'll take up, there's been a request to take up item thirty-seven out of order, so we'll go to that after. But first, we'll take our general public comment. Again, this is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. There's two minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is in Van Nuys City Hall, and Sean Murphy, welcome to the city council meeting and thank you for your comments. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, Mr. President, City Council. Whoever's our next governor, they have to create jobs, create jobs. We need jobs here and all over the United States and here in Los Angeles. Also, my condolences go out to the, for those people who got hurt in that school bus crash yesterday. It is, it's very sad and, oh, once again, whoever's our governor better create jobs and do a good job for California. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, Dr. Clyde Williams. After that, we'll go back to Van Nuys and Donna Perman will be our next speaker. Is Dr. Williams in the house? Is he able to make it in? We will hold his card and make sure we can come back to public comment for him if he's not here. Okay, we'll go back to Van Nuys. Donna Perman, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I want to tell people before I might be taking a bus to go to work that we need to tell the politicians they can't just have everything they want. Oh, yeah, I want to tell you what, they need to vote this election. We need to tell the politicians they can't just have everything they want. We voted down badly written solar panel initiative. Now we need to vote down proposition nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-five, especially twenty-two and twenty-five. We vote in pop twenty-two, we'll be beholden to developers, the CRA. Our state will have to take money elsewhere and we'll take it away from our essential city services. It's the CRA and MTA that will be, that won't be touched. The MTA will continue to misspend our money and go downhill, but our big, big winner, our big winner will be the, our big developers will be the big winners. And in the meantime, our libraries wreck and parks, nine one one, three one one will suffer. If you want huge development, you will want to see proposition twenty-two. If you don't want to see everything overflowed with huge, big development, then you vote no on twenty-two. Proposition twenty-five, allowing our politicians in Sacramento to pass bills with a simple majority will be a politician's dream come true. They could pass a very bad budget with a simple majority. It'll be the end of proposition thirteen, which we know it. They could do anything they want. They could come with anything they want with a simple majority. With a combination, our politicians will be laughing at us and the huge suckers in the world will, as, we will be the hugest suckers in the world. Proposition nineteen will legalize marijuana. It's not feasible with a small amount of collectives. Our city council gave us this and it also gets federal law and it will be a disaster in the making. Pop twenty-one, I believe people who want to go to state, I think it should be voluntary fee. People who want to go to the state park should pay it, not the others. Anyway, no on twenty-two and twenty-five.
Thank you, Donna. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker. Mr. Nightengale also in Van Nuys.
Hey, good morning, Rick Nightengale.
Good morning.
I completely agree with Donna, what she's saying, all those propositions. She is absolutely correct. You turn around and it's marijuana. I was in construction. Can you imagine being in construction and a guy comes in and he's a little high and that stuff? You know how dangerous it is already, especially you women. How do you, the way you worry about your husbands coming home. I've come home so many times hurt and it wasn't, you know, thank God they weren't drunker and high, but it'd be just so dangerous, just so dangerous. I cannot believe this. And regarding the others, we need jobs, plain jobs. You people condemn Schwarzenegger for when he went in to governor to what he tried to do, but you people voted those five initiatives that he tried to pass down about two or three years ago, about the unions and so forth. It had to be done and finally you, oh, God, yeah, that's what we got to do. You finally smartened up that the pensions and that are going to bankrupt this place and the city council is finally wise enough. They haven't moved too fast on it, but at least they are. I'm telling you, the only way this place can get is jobs. There used to be, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, you had all the car industries here, you had the aircraft industry here where jobs were just plentiful. Quit one job, go to the next. Not anymore. And the only way you're going to do it is small jobs and the small jobs that come in here, that's the only way you're going to survive so they can grow bigger and hire people. And there is only one person that's doing it. Only one person has said that they're willing to bring in jobs, oh, excuse me, two, Carly and Whitman. I'm telling you, make sure, it's the only deal you can turn around and do is you need jobs to get out of this situation. And there's no other way, unless you want to be taxed on everything and from the fee tax and so forth to a regular tax. That's the only thing how they're going to make money. There's no other way. And if you don't do it, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. So please get out and vote. Thank you.
Dr. Williams has returned. Dr. Clyde Williams is our last speaker for public comment.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five Barrett Road, Els Reno, Northeast LA. We got a notice, hey, there's going to be a motion regarding the L.A. Fire Department and brush clearance. We strongly support it and we also would suggest that enforcement of the provisions of the brush clearance ordinance be equitably distributed throughout all CDs because we find that in some areas it's not enforced, in other areas it's enforced with great vigor. So we'd like to promote and support the motion by Mr. Kokorian and Mr. Smith as to reexamining the entire brush clearance system, much more than just the fees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. That'll close our general public comment. We've had a request to take thirty-seven out of order if there's no objection and I know we've got a packed room that is here for this item as well, so we'll go to our public comments first on this and then we will go to council members. Our first speaker is Barry Poole. Would you like to come forward? And after Mr. Poole will be Cindy Coffin.
Good morning. My name is Barry Poole. I'm the elected power representative for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Employees Retirement Plan. I believe this proposal should be discussed with the unions prior to this council taking action on this item. I'm here on behalf of my brothers and sisters at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and urge you to vote no on this proposal.
Thank you very much. Cindy Coffin? Is Cindy Coffin here? Sorry, Cindy Coffin, come on down. After that will be John Pekarski. Pekarski, excuse me. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Coffin. I'm an elected member by these guys right here. To the Water and Power Retirement Board, I am currently vice president of that board. I am also currently a thirty-seven-year employee with the Department of Water and Power and I also do take my fiduciary responsibility on the retirement board very, very seriously. I believe that by even considering this charter amendment, it would be a great disservice to D W P retirement plan. We have worked very, very hard at keeping our plan strong through these difficult financial times. I urge you to vote no against this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Coffin. We appreciate your service. John Pekarski is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. My name is John Pekarski and I am the rank and file president of I B W Local eighteen. I'm a thirty-year employee of the Department of Water and Power as well as a participant of Water and Power's retirement plan. We, we have been striving along with the most elected members of the Water and Power Retirement Board of administration to make the plan the most financial solvent in the city of Los Angeles. The proposed charter amendment to put the plan under council control would surely mean the degradation of its financial solvency and we urge that you vote against that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Javier Romero and then Brian Darcy will follow him. Good morning to you.
Good morning. My name is Javier Romero. I've been president of the retirement board for the past ten years. I've been elected by all the hard men, working men and women behind me in the overflow rooms and out in the sidewalks right now because they care about their pension plan and what's going on with the city council today. They are here today so that they can see how council is truly representing them and their pension plan. As a board member, I am here to ensure that the plan is secure and we work very hard as board members to make sure that the plan stays secure. I've been before council twice in the past two weeks, asking council not to undermine my board's authority over the pension plan and have not been successful. Our board's plenary authority is protected by the state constitution and this council does not seem to recognize that. Here I am again for the third time, this time brought a few of my brothers and sisters behind me so they can see, so that they can see who is undermining their best interest. If you care about the people behind me, their families and our ratepayers, I urge you to vote no on the charter amendment. Our pension plan is the L.A. Department of Water and Power Pension Plan. It is not the city of L.A. bailout plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Darcy. Mr. Darcy, would you come forward? Once, thank you very much. If I can ask Mr. Darcy to come forward. After Mr. Darcy will be Mitchell Whittington. After Mr. Darcy will be Mitchell, after Mr. Darcy is Mitchell Whittington. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brian Darcy. I'm the business manager, financial secretary of I B W Local eighteen and a Los Angeles resident. I'm going to be brief because I think that you understand our message. There's an old joke about in the land of the blind, the one-eyed man is king. Well, in the land of bad ideas, this amendment is king. So I urge that you vote against this because it's not in anybody's interest, including the city of Los Angeles, and let's stop fooling with this nonsense.
Our next speaker is Mitchell Whittington. After Mr. Whittington will be Craig Wilson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'd like to address city council.
You might come in just a little closer so we can hear you a little better. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I'd like to address city council with this, AKA Big Country, everybody knows me, I B W member. Come on, baby, give it up. This is not a situation for the city council because of decisions in the past for us, the Department of Water and Power, to bail out the other pension plans through the city. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much. Craig Wilson? After Mr. Wilson will be Dominic Lerma. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Craig Wilson. I only speak for myself. I've got thirty-five years with the city and D W P. I've worked for twenty different departments. I probably have more experience than any of these people here as far as city employment. But I want to thank Mr. Rosenthal and all of you for the raises we've gotten and all that, but as far as the issue at hand today, we all, some of us worked forty years laboring under the assumption that we would get the retirement plan that we're going to get. If you combine, I see it as combining our retirement plan with the city side and to me, that's a, that's a black hole. It's, it's a race to the bottom. Seems like all of you, you want us all to be equally poor. You want, you want us all to be dependent on government, dependent on food stamps and that's how I feel about it and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your service. Dominic Lerma? After Mr. Lerma will be Vincent Foley. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. What qualifies me, I guess, to be here is working for the Department of Water and Power for twenty-three years, specifically in the pension system. The gentleman that ran the pension system prior, Mr. Richard Goss, was a very good manager. We've been writing on that and in two thousand, twenty thousand thirteen, he wanted a fully funded pension, which means it wouldn't be bothered by motions in the stock market. We were almost there. This will really screw it up. You're going to put this out to the people that probably are jealous, the public, as a way of getting what you want. You may get it, but further on down the line, years from now, we will all pay the price for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lerma. Our last speaker is Vincent Foley. Good morning, Mr. Foley.
Good morning. Honorable members of the city council, members of city management, thank you for listening to us today. My name is Vincent Foley. I was, I'm a thirty-seven-year employee of the Department of Water and Power, so I was a participant in that plan for thirty-seven years. I retired fifteen years ago, so now I'm a beneficiary of that plan. And I was for the last fifteen years of my career, president of the D W P Retirement Board. And I can tell you, folks, that this is a huge mistake. I've got an awfully lot of prepared remarks, but I'm not going to make all of them for your benefit. All I would like to say is, and I'm here representing the ten thousand D W P retirees and surviving spouses, and until now, D W P retirees have felt secure in knowing that their seven billion dollar retirement system has remained free of the recent scandals encountered by other pension plans, particularly from political appointments. And given that this council already has the authority to negotiate with D W P's unions about pension reform, why not just do that and not stir up such great anxiety among D W P's eighty-five hundred retirees, beneficiaries, and almost nine thousand employees? I urge you to receive and round file this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Rick Nightengale in Van Nuys. Good morning again, Mr. Nightengale.
Good morning, Rick Nightengale. I'm a member of the I B W, was a member for forty years. I was going to go with D W P, but they said I had to start my union pension over again. I was about sixteen, about twelve years into it already and I said, no, thank you. And I completely agree with all of them down there regarding the city taking over their pension. You ought to learn your lesson between what's going on now with the pension plans, how you screwed everything up regarding the way the stock market came and you're, and you're responsible, and haven't you learned your lesson regarding that? That stay out of the pensions, you have no business governing any money regarding pensions and otherwise. But let's go back to the union. You people are making so much money and the scandals between you people are going on that you don't even watch your own brotherhood when he does something wrong, drinking and sleeping and so forth, that you don't guard that and say something to your brother to get his ass up and do something, finish the work. That has to scandal as far as I'm concerned because I wouldn't let my brother sit there and do things and then I'm sitting there working. That's why so many people are down on you people for the stuff that you're doing. The money you're making is outrageous because you paid off all these council people because anytime that a council person takes money from the union, and I don't think, I voted against every time, that you shouldn't be giving any money to a council or anybody else and if you do, they can't turn around and have a contract with you because somebody owes somebody a favor on that deal. And you people have gotten paid off so well, you make so much more money than the rest of the, the union members that are working out there in the real world that it's unbearably. And you people are down there screaming and yelling. I agree with you that they shouldn't touch the pension, but you should be scandalous about the rest of the situation. Thank you.
All right, that will close our public comment. I guess the lesson is be careful who you start clapping for. You never know what they're going to say. But with that, we'll recognize Mr. Parks and then Mr. Alakon and Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks?
Could we have the city staff come up, please?
Like C A Os?
C A Os, C L A and, and we can start off with the C A O and to comment on your report that was presented to committee.
Good morning, Miguel Santana, C A O. We have been discussing pension reform and as sworn later today, there are current discussions regarding civilians in the city. We were asked to provide a report specifically to D W P. What is clear to point out is that from my understanding, the recommendation before you does not make a change to the current D W P pension system.
Could you repeat that, please?
What is before you today does not. What is before you today does not make a change to the current DWP pension system for current employees. Nor does it make a change...
I can ask for an order, please, just for these hearings.
Nor does it make a change for future employees. There is not a proposal before you to make any changes to the pension plans for either the existing employees or future employees. The report that we established that in order for you to make any changes, there would have to be a charter amendment granting you the authority to do so. And so Mr. Parks' motion asks that that amendment and that charter amendment be placed before the voters of Los Angeles.
For the protocol, council chambers, we do encourage folks, if you want to clap on things, go ahead. But please, we cannot boo in here. We'll ask for order during the hearings. Thank you for respecting that. We ask that for all speakers and all opinions. Please, that will be the order of the day. Mr. Parks.
Can you add that back to my time?
We can credit you if you say so.
But let me ask, Miguel, you've been working on the pensions reform issues through all of the plans. Could you tell basically on what the goal is in the sense of pension reform in the City of Los Angeles, and what is the issue as far as sustainability of the pensions?
Your council has directed us to identify different options to maintain our civilian... our city civilian and our sworn on a much more sustainable track. The proposal on the sworn will generate a 20% savings to our overall pension plan. The civilian proposal that we've released a report on on Friday goes further. And in respects to the DWP, our office has not identified any specific changes for DWP future hires.
Okay. Also, could you comment on, I think one of the speakers talked about the idea of whether these pensions are under this proposal? Are we merging the three pensions?
Again, from the motion, as I read it, does not address that specific question. It keeps the pension systems separate as they currently are.
Okay, they're separate. The other issue is that is contemplated that each pension will have their own board or commission?
It does not make a change to the makeup of the pension board for DWP or the other pension boards.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah, I just wanted, again, in response to some of the comments, there is a separate pension board, and this is not what's being referred to. There's a separate pension board for DWP, there's a separate pension board for Lasers, and there's a separate pension board for our sworn pension system. The management of the system is entirely under their control. They have a fiduciary responsibility to benefit the active members and the retired members. What this talks about is who weighs in on changing the benefits of the pension system. And what your motion would propose right now under the charter is the DWP board, and the motion would propose that it would be the council. But the conveyance of benefits is the only thing that would be discussed. The management of the system would still have to be separate.
Okay. And that's by what, state law?
Yes, constitutional law.
Also, currently under the DWP pension, is it a requirement that both the pension board and the commission agree on any changes or direction of the plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So the issue is that the motion today is talking about, give me the right term, changing responsibility? Is it what?
It would put the City Council on a position of working with the pension board on discussing changes in benefits for new employees. It would not impact the management of the system.
All right. And then I think as some of the discussions have gone forward, the issue, have we made any assessment, or do we have any issues as far as sustainability of the current DWP pension? Have we done any actuarial studies?
No. Again, we have not made any specific proposals to changing the pension plans for future hires in DWP, in part because you don't have the authority to make those changes. Obviously, if that ever were to come about, then there would have to be actuarial studies in the same way that we have completed for the civilians and for the sworn.
So there's no preconceived notion as to what the pension would look like because we don't have the authority?
That is correct.
Okay. And then as far as the issues as far as looking at, as we've heard for years, the generousness of the pension, is it on a par with Lasers?
Well, currently, the benefits are somewhat similar, but there are some differences. For example, when we look at the retirement factor, over at Lasers, it's basically 2.16% per year of service. And over at DWP, their factor is 2.3% per year of service, so it's slightly higher. This is for folks that have a minimum age of 55 with 30 years of service. So in that regard, there is a little bit of a difference in their benefits.
Do we say... Do we have any sense of what the amount of contributions that are made in the laser pension by the city, and compare that with what's the contribution by DWP into that system?
Well, we do have some of that information. The DWP actuary is also the actuary for Lasers. And most recently, the newest valuation has been released. It was released as of September. And when we look at the department's contribution, last year in 2009, it was about 26% of pay. And the amount that was paid up by the department was about $210 million. The new valuation that just came out in September had an increase up to 38.5% of pay. So that's slightly about 12% more that the department will be paying this year for their pension costs. Keep in mind that this does not include retiree healthcare costs, because that's not part of the scope of the valuation. But this 38.5% of pay, it does result in a $330 million payment for the Department of Water and Power.
And what year is that for?
That's for this current year, 2009.
Again, what is it, 300 what million?
330 million.
Okay. And then where do those funds come from?
Those come from... Basically, they come in three ways to fund pensions. It comes from investment gains from the retirement board. And then there's also employer contributions, which this $330 million would have to come from DWP. And then the other part that funds the retirement plan is from employee contributions.
Okay. When we say from DWP, where does that money come from?
Well, that money is basically from ratepayers.
Ratepayers, so the people that live in the City of L.A.?
Yes, for the services that the department provides.
Okay. Mr. Parks, if I can ask you to press your button again after this question. Go ahead. You can ask that.
No, I'll press again and then again.
All right. Mr. Zine is our next speaker, and then Mr. Alacon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The Water and Power pension system, how well is that funded?
The latest valuation is it went down from about 90% down to about 81.5%.
81.5%?
Yes.
And how does that compare to the other Lasers and Fire and Police?
It's in the same, roughly the same ballpark. Pensions, I believe, does have a slightly higher funded ratio.
The issue of meet and confer, meet and discuss, has that taken place, either of those, with the Department of Water and Power representatives on this particular matter?
No, they have not.
So what we're talking about is an issue that would have impact in the future on the pension system. And there's been no discussion with the representatives from the Department of Water and Power, from the pension system of the Department of Water and Power. Is that correct?
What I would recommend is the city attorney's response specific to that question. But we've been advised by the city attorney that because this is about the governance, not the actual pension plans themselves, a meeting confer or a meeting consult is not necessary.
While it may not be necessary...
Again, this will be our last warning. Please, we can express our opinions, but please, we'll have to remove the folks from chambers. Thank you. Mr. Zine.
While it may not be necessary, sometimes it's the right thing to do. Now, I appreciate the applause and support. The problem is, we only have three minutes to speak, and every time you interrupt, that takes away opportunities for me to ask some questions. So I appreciate your pause at the end, if you wish to do so. Thank you. So there's been no study, there's been no actuarial, there's been nothing except an idea that came up in committee to put this on the ballot for this march. Is that correct?
We didn't do a study because there's no change being recommended on the pension plan itself.
But the governance of the pension itself from the Department of Water and Power, that matter is being proposed to put on the march ballot.
That is correct.
Okay. That's the concern that I have. I sit on the committee. I'm a member of this body like everyone else. And all these employees that are here from the Department of Water and Power, or the police or the fire, because I know we're going to talk about police and fire pensions, they all have a stake in this. This is their future, retirement. We heard from one representative who's retired. I think in fairness to them, it would be advantageous for us to have a discussion and not do the quick, "Let's move it forward." It's a surprise to them, as you can see the turnout of people that are here this morning. They're concerned about it. I'm retired from the police department. I'd be concerned about it the same way as if this was going to happen without some kind of review, some kind of discussion, some type of intervention to find out if what we're doing, we can get their support. We're getting the support from the police and fire on the modification that we're making. We're getting the support to move forward on the march ballot. Honestly, I think we're premature by putting this on the march ballot. And I would make a recommendation that we have a meet and consult or a meet and confer with the representatives from the Water and Power on the pension plan. And if we're going to do something, clearly pensions need to be addressed, and pensions need to be structured appropriate so we can sustain them. But I don't know if rushing it through at this particular juncture is the right thing to do for the representatives of the department or the people of Los Angeles. So I would recommend that we don't support this today, that we come up with another plan that's fair to everyone, including the taxpayers of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Alacon is our next speaker. Mr. Alacon.
Mr. President, is there a second to that motion?
A second. Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, I doubt that I will ever support the complete takeover of the DWP retirement system by the City Council. But I'll support the motion just because we do have to have a discussion about the pension systems in general. This proposal, coming out of the blue with no analysis whatsoever, no legal analysis, no actuarial analysis, it's just not the way that things should be done. The first thing is, we shouldn't wait till the last minute. Secondly, on the substance of the issue, in essence, we have no idea what the ramifications of this kind of proposal would be. We don't know what kind of changes would come with it. We have to assume that in making the change of leadership, in essence, we must want to make some changes. So if that's the goal, then tell us what those changes are, and then we can make a decision in the full light of day. But we don't have that information. We don't know what the decisions are, what the choices are. And I think this is putting the cart before the horse. We all know that pension reform is looming. But how... But in terms of the leadership and the structure, leadership structure of how we make decisions relative to pensions, I don't see a problem with DWP's pension system. I see a problem with the city's pension system. And that's... So the simple message, you don't have to be a high-paid political consultant to know. You could be a low-paid political consultant, or even not a consultant whatsoever, and figure out, why would we want the City of L.A. to have control of a pension system when the pension system they're in control of now is in trouble? It just doesn't make sense. So I do want to say, I was as upset about the reciprocal agreement issue with city employees, with the commission taking an action to, in essence, say that the reciprocal agreement that's been in place for some 20 or 30 years be changed so that the city's pension system be more heavily burdened. I think that that is also jumping to action before full consideration. In other words, the commission, the DWP pension system, should have consulted with us and given us an opportunity to respond and come up with a better idea than the one they came up with. But on this issue, that's a far reach from jumping to, in essence, what appears to be a full takeover. If we can't manage what we have now, why should we take on more burden? This is a bad idea, and we shouldn't do it. So I urge that we dispose of this issue today, or at the minimum, send it off for further analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon.
Well, this is questionable for, I don't know how many different reasons, many of which have already been mentioned. I'm not sure why we're doing this, first of all. That isn't really clear to me. So purpose isn't clear. Analysis isn't there, so I don't know what the impacts will be and why they would be positive. I'm not clear on why we're not doing this as a meet and confer, we're not doing this as a meet and discuss, we're just trying to jam it down their throats. All those things are interesting, but really, the only relevant issue is, this is a ballot measure. This kind of thing will pass with the cooperation of a union and a pension system and the city. You put this on now, do you think these folks will get this defeated? Is the city going to fight to make sure this passes? The answer is no. This is going to fail. We can set up a divisive ballot measure, set up a huge battle, waste a lot of people's time, make them spend millions of dollars for nothing, and I'm not even sure we get anything out of this. This is as pointless a thing as I've seen on an agenda. So please vote this down, and let's start a discussion. And if we figure out a purpose to this at some point, if we have some analysis of this at some point, and we all work together and put something on the ballot, then let's do it.
Mr. Carruthers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. There were a few sessions where the City Council gathered and talked about one item, and we gave ourselves all day, if necessary, to hear from the staff, to hear from the experts, to hear from the public comment about a particular issue item per day. I think that talking about pension/pensions of the City of Los Angeles, whether it's a proprietary pension or the pensions of the city, I think it's responsible of us to speak in the full light of day about what is going on with our pensions. How much of the general fund of the Department of Water and Power is going into the pensions to sustain it? How much of the general fund of the City of Los Angeles is going into our pensions to sustain them? What kind of return on investment are we getting? The actuaries, where are they getting those actuarial numbers? Are they using the textbook actuaries, or are they actually using the real numbers going on with what's going on with real investments and things of that nature? I think that it would only be fair to the people who advise us, and it would only be fair to the people who work for all of these various city entities. And I think it's appropriate and responsible that the policymaking body of the City of Los Angeles have that discussion so we can be educated, so we can know what we're voting for and why we should move in this direction or that. So I think that it's important for us to go ahead and call. What I'd like to do is make a motion that we put forth a full day of commitment of the City Council to hear a one-item discussion, give ourselves all day, like we've done in the past, to speak just about pensions. And to get the right kind of analysis and the right kind of advice so that we could understand as policymakers what is going on with all of the pensions, so therefore we can start making informed, intelligent decisions about what we should do about our pensions. So that's what I ask for. Thank you.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Krikorian is our next speaker.
Mr. President, was there a second to that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second on that. Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think a lot of the discussion today has indicated that there is sincere concern on the part of this council about having thoughtful discussions about pension reform and ensuring sustainability of our city employees' pensions. about pension reform and ensuring sustainability of our city employees' pensions. And I think we do need to continue to have that kind of thoughtful discussion, and we need to have other thoughtful discussions about the need to increase transparency and accountability at the Department of Water and Power. And I've, you know, been one of the vocal people on that topic. But I think we also have to here focus on transparency. And as we heard from some of the public comments from some of the union members today, there seems to be a fair amount of misunderstanding about what the proposal is that's before us today. But let me finish, if I could. The reason that there is misunderstanding about what the proposal is before us is for the very reason that I don't believe we have done the work of putting before this council what's before us. And I, for one, would support Mr. Zine's motion, because I think it's important that if we're going to have a thoughtful discussion, we need to do it in the light of day, we need to do it with the full participation and understanding of our brothers and sisters, our partners in labor. We need to do it with a full participation of the public, of ratepayers, and I don't feel like that's before us today. I don't have the kind of analysis that I need to be able to decide what should go on the ballot in terms of changes in governance. Mr. Caress made an important point about this being a ballot proposition that's going to be before us, and he discussed, you know, the likelihood of success. The likelihood of success is not so important to me. What's important to me is that we put a good proposal before the voters on the ballot when we put it forward. And I can't say, as we stand here, that I, as a council member, know whether or not this is a good proposal, because we haven't taken the time to vet this proposal. So I support Mr. Zine in his motion to put this matter over for further discussion. I don't think that we're prepared to put it on the March ballot with a vote today. I'd like us to vet this a lot more closely, and to engage labor to make sure that we have a proposal that's going to work to guarantee a governance system that allows accountability and transparency and sustainability of those pension funds.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to vote no on this today. I mean, we can't lump all this pension business into one pension reform discussion, first of all. Second of all, DWP is a proprietary department. You know, it provides great power at a cheaper rate than any other utility in the state. So let's just separate it out. When we deal with our city's budget and the services we provide where we need this pension reform, it has to do with the general fund. This does not have to do with the general fund, and what this group does is give us a profit that goes to the general fund and helps... I will not forget the brownouts and the blackouts we had a few years back, and which utility was selling power to other groups? Which utility kept its rates down? DWP. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine, who's next?
I'm sorry. I was caught up in the excitement.
A lot of excitement. Mr. Weezer.
I'll keep my comments brief. We often say around this horseshoe that we should let the voters decide in putting something on the ballot, but in this case, we're not doing our jobs if the only thing on our page is a one-sentence to put this on the ballot. We haven't done our job, we haven't done our analysis, as has been said before, and in this case, as is often said, when we say, "Let the voters decide, let's put it on the ballot," we have a responsibility to thoroughly know what we're putting on the ballot before we put it on the ballot. In this case, we're not. So we should move this forward and not put it on the ballot and get back the information...
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to members for your comments today, and thank you for everybody. We will wrap this up quickly so everybody can get back to work, and we appreciate you being here and spending time with us, and we appreciate the work that you do, to hear folks that have been working for 40 years, to know the danger. And one thing I would just ask of everybody in this is, let's not turn this into an us versus them. There are city workers, when we're comparing pensions, who have jobs that are just as difficult, who put their lives on the line, and we recognize that we have lost people out there on the line. We know the danger that people go through there. We truly are one city. Many of you are L.A. residents in the city, as well as being employees of the city, and we need to make sure that what we talk about here is how we do this together, and I think you've resoundingly heard that it's best done when we do these things together. I want to point out that IBEW was one of the first and the only unions to step up on pension reform last year. When you said to us, in terms of taking zeros, the base was reset in a way that wouldn't compound on the pensions. We had a unanimous vote around this horseshoe because that was leadership, and to me, we need to recognize that leadership by sitting down and making sure we do this the right way. Second, though, let's not demonize the city. We haven't run pensions in the ground, fact a recent study the Pew Trust did on the top 10 cities in America had on our civilian side, that we are the best funded in terms of our pensions on that side of any of the top 10 cities. So I want to make sure that we disentangle a lot of the scare tactics. Mr. Parks is correct that this was not going to do anything more than look at whether the commission or the council has some authority on looking at changing future pensions. But the right way to begin that conversation is by sitting down with respect with you and making that happen. I think, I certainly pledge as your council president to do that, I think this body will do that, because when we sit down, what we are able to accomplish together, it pays off much more than what we do when we fight one another. But what I ask of you is not to come in here with scare tactics as well, or to pit us against other city employees. We are one city family. We need to pull together in tough times. We've not seen economic times like this, and if you've seen this council deliver a good middle-class living for folks, which has eroded and gone away. And I remember giving this speech five years ago, when we had your contract up here, and I said, "Where is that middle class gone?" You are that middle class. We will protect you, but make sure that you look out for your brothers and sisters throughout this city, and that we remember that ultimately, we serve the public, and I know that you know that. Whether it's when there's a brownout, or whether there's something that goes with a pipe burst, you're out there. We have to do the same thing when it comes to making sure that we're on secure fiscal ground, and we'll do that by starting with sitting down with you and giving you that respect today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Councilman Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just say, please don't do that. I don't go to your house and make noise. Thank you. Let me just say this. One of the things I think is important and what's been missed, and I think Mr. Krikorian is right, we should have thoughtful, in the sense of processing, we also should have thoughtful listening, because all these issues were brought no more than two months ago, as a list of about 15 different motions about pension reform that we gave direction to the CAO to begin to work on. He didn't create this report today out of the air, and so when he created this report, he was working on the direction. The other issue is, if you get confused about the process, we're not changing the dynamics of the pension system in that request. We can't even have the authority to go in the discussion unless you change the charter and put the council in that position. The city attorney has come to us over and over again and said it is a meet and consult, it's not a meet and confer, so to continue to ask that question is begging the question. So if we're going to try to stand today and get applause, that's great. The issue is, the public understands the pension systems are in distress. We can kick this ball, and expect it to explode on someone else's foot, we also realize that this pension fund is funded about 81%. We also know that on its return on investment, it turned out in a double-digit loss last year. So it does not have that ability, just like every other pension system in the city. And so we can move forward and keep kicking the can, but please don't stand up as a collective or individual and talk about we're saving the city money, and that we're here as a fighter against loss and corruption. The issue is, is that this pension system is in no better shape than the other two. If we do not take action, it will be unsustainable, and again, just because it's ratepayers doesn't mean it's a different group of people than people that pay the general fund tax and fees. I'm going to make a recommendation, this goes back to committee, so all of these questions that have been asked today and were asked before can be re-asked and re-answered, and so we can bring it back, hopefully, at a later time, and we can move forward, because pension reform is absolutely significant to the city's health, and as long as we're in this body, it's important for us to look at the 4 million people that we represent who's paying the tab. And I would hope that we get it back to committee, get it back so that we can move forward, because we cannot have pension reform in the city of L.A. if we're going to not deal with the most generous pension in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second to send that to committee.
Mr. Zine. So, I think we've debated this particular matter of the 37, and if we can move on that, and then, all these water and power people go back to work, and then we can move on with the fire and police, Mr. President. So I think we have concurrence on this particular matter. Ms. Hahn, are you giving me that snake eye again? But we still have the fire and police on the...
Yes, we'll be taking that up next. Thank you. Mr. Weezer. All right, as the last speaker, it's a moot point, but well done. The question is called without objection, so nobody can press their button again. So we have Mr... No, no, hold on. Don't worry. Mr. Clerk, if you'll walk us through the...
The last motion made, the first one voted on, is to send the matter back to committee.
Okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Okay, that is sent back. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item. Thank you for being here today, we appreciate your presence. We will... Colleagues, we'll just take a one-minute recess. If folks need a bathroom break or anything, do not go anywhere, we'll take up the sworn pension item next. We'll just take a one-minute recess as we clear the chambers and make sure folks can get back in. Thank you.
Colleagues, we still have the second part of this matter. The fire and police pension modification, Tier 6. And the first speaker on this matter will be Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, colleagues, and thank you very much. I know there's folks that are coming back in.
Oh, Mr. Garcetti. Sergeant Arms, if you can clear that pathway, and we thank the Water and Power folks for being here, but we're back in session hearing the matter, so if we can remain quiet in chambers, I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, proceed.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we listened on Friday to the actuary and his study on the proposal for reforming our future pensions for future hires in our police and fire departments. I think we know that we must fundamentally reform City Hall, that our fiscal strength in the future, 20 years from now, we want to have workers and city council members who look back saying, "Thank you for doing the right thing," in a way that we wonder what happened 20 years before of what we've inherited. But a critical component of this is obviously, as we've already mentioned earlier this morning, is our pension system and an overhaul of it. The status quo, in many ways, is unsustainable. We saw the charts in the financial status report for our mid-year, and we have to reform our pension systems that affect the general fund from both our sworn and civilian sides. We've also discussed DWP pension reform, we just were talking about that, but I've put forward here a plan to enact fundamental and unprecedented reform to look at our civilian system, and now today, looking at our sworn system. And I want to thank those members of our police and fire unions who have modeled, I think, how we have these discussions, who haven't always committed to saying yes, but who have committed to looking at the issue, who have asked the good questions and studied these, I think union leaders often know, certainly better than council members, and sometimes better than city staff, know the intricacies of pensions. And so, as it partners together, looking at what we need to do so that for the next 30 years, as we almost completely replace every single current firefighter and every current police officer, we would be able to save billions of dollars by some small adjustments that will still recognize work, keep us competitive, have good benefits, and also allow current employees to be able to buy into these changes as well, will, I think, do well for us to protect not just our police and fire services, but everything that we do, our libraries, our parks, reducing traffic, et cetera. So I think these fundamental reforms that we need, we must act today, though, to establish that foundation upon which further fiscal reforms can be built. We must, for example, reform the way that we pay for health care, and we're having good discussions with our unions about that, too, and I thank the CAO for the hard work that he and his staff have done. We won't balance the budget on pension reform, and I'll say that every single time we have this discussion. We will have tough decisions on how to balance this year's budget that have nothing to do with pension reform, because pension reform really pays out over the next 30 years. An estimated $172, $173 million over a 30-year period for every thousand people we replace. If we replace all 14,000 to 15,000 sworn employees over that 30-year period, we're looking at nearly $2 billion, probably more than $2 billion. We just replaced about 11,500 of them. That would be $2 billion of savings over the next 30 years, something the CAO would love, something we would do well, but most importantly, the people of L.A. would have services protected. But we can't complete our journey without taking this first step. So again, thank you to our partners in making this happen. If the CAO would walk us through the proposal that is before us with the amendment, I know Mr. Zine worried that it was just an actuary study, I think, and I'd like the city clerk to ensure from the amendment that I offered, when we discussed this on Friday, it was to allow current members in, and there was nothing about actuary study, it was to let them do that, but let's clarify that. What we have before us today, what those savings look like, why this is important, and how we can get this done. Thank you.
Take it away.
Good morning. We have a...
And if I can add one technical amendment, it was, I think, we had it wrong on the report, that we would change 30 years of service to 33 years of service in the third paragraph of the summary, that is, from the Rules and Elections and Personnel Joint Committee meeting. That was a technical mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning. In January, we presented to you a series of recommendations for pension changes to our sworn. You directed us to sit down with all of our sworn bargaining units, and understanding that we may disagree on the issue of meet and consult versus meet and confer, to try to sit down and reach consensus. Our original proposal was to make a change to our pension for future hires, to allow all new future police and firefighters to fall under the old Tier 4. The reason why that is, is because the change that occurred about eight years ago resulted in a significant increase in our costs, in our pensions. We looked at that, and we sat down with various bargaining units, and looked at other alternative models. What they raised were points... We'll skip through the third chart, which basically is a summary of the various facts that we've discussed before. Tier Four walks you through the drop program, which you're all familiar with. The next slide, really, I think it's slide number five, really shows you why we're having this discussion. This is a snapshot from 1992 to the more current budget. It shows the changes in our, in our costs and our contributions towards our pension costs, and they, they show that they've increased in the last 10 years. What is particularly frightening, if you look at the next slide, which shows the projected cost for the addition of five years ahead of us, it goes from nearly $400 million to nearly $700 million in a five-year period of time. This, the next slide, Slide Six, walks you through more specifically. This, the $450 million for next fiscal year is, also includes of that, $129 million of retiree health. The total value of that is about 11.88% of our general fund. We're expected to see retiree health alone in the next five years rise by 20%, and it would get to a point of being $164 million. The total for both retiree health and our pension costs will be nearly 20% of the general fund, just for police and fire. So the reason we're having this discussion is to make a dent, not for the immediate, as the council president indicated, but for the long term, and make these plans sustainable. We'll skip through most of these slides. What's before you, and go to Slide 11. What's before you is a, is the best plan out of 10 that we actually studied. And as I indicated, we looked at going back to Tier Four and a variety of different other strategies to reduce this cost. We looked at everything from the retirement age, retirement age, the factor, changing the maximum retirement allowance, the employee contributions to our pensions and retiree health, and the final compensation. All of those things were examined. 10 different plans were studied by an actuary, and this is the plan that results in the greatest savings while maintaining the integrity of our system. This plan will save us approximately 22% of our normal pension costs in the future. To put it in more specific terms, it would save us, for every 1,000 employees that we hire, we expect to save $173 million. We made an estimate, looking at the, how many employees we expect to hire, just simply to maintain the status quo in terms of our fire and police. From that, we were able to generate a projected savings for the next 10 years, and we, we expect that to be about $152 million in the next 10 years. This, this plan provides us even greater savings, as I indicated, than simply going back to Tier Four. Where, under that analysis, we would only get $131. This provides us over $20 million more than going back to Tier Four. The other way of looking at this is that, as I indicated, eight years ago, the city adopted a different pension system, which increased our costs significantly. Had, had at that time, the voters approved the plan that's before you today, the city would have generated in the last eight to nine years, nearly $300 million, specifically $283 million with the savings. That's the difference between the existing plan that we have today and the plan that's being proposed, if we could go back in time and have that plan be the one that's adopted. In short, the, the best way of looking at how this plan changes the existing benefit, if you go to, to the chart before you, it draws out sort of in real terms of an average retirement at age 50 with a salary of $97,570. Currently, if someone retires at age, at that age, and has approximately 25 years of service, they receive, I'm going sort of in the middle of this chart, they will receive 63,421. Under the proposal that you have before you, they, you would see a 10% reduction in their compensation as, when they retire, encouraging that employee then to work longer as a city Again, this plan maintains the 9% towards pension, but also increases, for the first time, provides a 2% towards retiree health. Retiree health continues to be the fastest-growing cost in our overall pension system. This plan minimizes pension spiking by changing the formula from the current pension benefits based on the highest 12 months, and requires now that it be based on the highest 24 months of city employment. This plan also makes changes to survivor benefits, and, you know, in the unfortunate case of, of a firefighter, a police officer dying on the line of duty, this plan enhances the benefit for their survivors. But the most important thing is that this plan not only provides the savings that we're seeking, it also allows us to maintain a competitive edge in the surrounding environment. And while certainly we continue to hire police, and we'll be hiring firefighters next year, we're doing so in an environment where many other jurisdictions are not. That is very likely to change as the economy improves. We saw that five years ago, where the maintaining and hiring police officers was particularly difficult. We want to make sure that we're making decisions and recommendations that allow us to maintain a competitive advantage in the future as other jurisdictions continue to hire, and we, this plan does exactly that. That concludes our remarks on this proposal. I'd like to personally thank my staff, who's worked very hard in, and with our sworn counterparts on this proposal. We were able to find a common ground, one that allows us to generate the savings that we, we sought to seek out, at the same time, address the concerns that they raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed, Sergeant Arms, you need to quiet this room down, and the continuing conversation by staff is very disruptive. It's not the folks in chambers, it's the staff that's creating the disturbance.
It's the media.
It's not the media. Thank you, Mr. Schwadner.
He did it outright.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Mr. Schwadner's not taking responsibility for that. Okay, Mr. Garcetti, to close?
Well--
No one else is on the cue.
I want to abide by the council rules, so I'll press my button again. Thank you.
No one's on the cue but you.
Oh, okay. Then I'll press it again. Okay. So, folks, I think it's pretty straightforward what we have here today. I ask for your support. As, as I said, it's over $2 billion of savings for 30 years. It stops some of the things that I think we all agree on, pension spiking. It still rewards hard work. It allows those who are currently in the system to be able to take advantage of the benefits of this, but also in a way that continues to save us money. One last note I'll also make, if you read the supporting materials that I think are somewhere, if not, ask the CAO for them, when we did the actuary study of a defined contribution and a defined benefit, as part of the studies from this and civilian, there's been a big clamor out there saying, "Hey, you know, the real world people don't get pensions. They have 401Ks. Let our public employees just get a contribution." Ride up and down with the market, good luck. If a city goes bankrupt, it's like General Motors, you might lose everything, but, but do that because fair is fair. And implicit in that is that the taxpayers are spending more money to support these things called pensions with a defined benefit at the end, in which we guarantee people will get paid a certain amount, as opposed to just that the city will contribute a defined amount. What was interesting about our actuary study is it costs more. We actually saved less. We do save some money if we were to move everybody to a 401K tomorrow, but because we'd have to do other things, like starting to pay social security like any employer, et cetera, we actually saved less than this reform that's going to be before us, both on the civilian and the sworn side today. And so we stand with our unions and with the people of Los Angeles. Forget whether you love or hate a union. If you want to save money, it makes sense to have a well-managed public pension system with a defined benefit rather than a 401K system. And that was really great to see here. I, I know that there have been different folks who felt that way. I was told that by a very conservative Republican from the state of Missouri years ago, when we were on a panel together at National League of Cities, that when you look at it and take the politics out of it and stop bashing public employees, it also makes financial sense. But it's the right thing to do for our employees, too. And again, we hope that this gets on the ballot, that the people of Los Angeles will join with us, do the right thing. I know we have the support from the, from UFLAC, and we appreciate that. We have non-opposition from PPL, and we look forward to their statements after we put this on the ballot. But we couldn't have done this without working together with both of you and without the CAO really putting the vision forward for this. And thank you to the mayor, too, for his support of this plan, too. Thank you.
And Mr. Garcetti, for clarification for the PPL and for the Fire, can you make sure that that issue on opt-in for current employees is covered?
Yes. We, we had the language from before on the opting in. It's that they have the ability to, I just want to read that so that, that folks will know. It says, "Request the city attorney to include language to allow the council by ordinance to amend Tier Six to allow members of other tiers to elect to transfer to Tier Six, provided it's actuarially cost-neutral." And we've, and we know that, we've looked at that. I mean, obviously, we have that agreement that we're not going to do something that busts the budget, but we know that we can and that it will. "And request the city attorney to include a provision to allow unclaimed monies to revert to the plan to avoid us getting it to the state," because the last thing we want to see is the state swoop out the hard-working benefits, or the benefits of our hard-working sworn employees. Okay, thank you.
And that's for a one-year period from the beginning of the implementation?
We can, we can decide that by ordinance. We don't have to put that limit on necessarily. We can work with our, with our union partners for how long that period will be, and we want to make it work for our, our current employees, so we'll make sure that they have, that employees have a reasonable amount of time to make that decision, for sure. But we're not, let's not nail ourselves into a year, because we could decide, you know, some people could decide later, potentially.
Okay, very well. Mr., we're ready for a vote? Let me go.
I, I wanted to add three more items that didn't make it to the report, that, that were final items that were requested that we support. The first was a request by the city attorney to place the new tier language in the charter and not the admin code. For the city attorney's advice, they will be able to draft the charter language in time, given that we have all the specificity. This amends, amends our staff report, so if you approve that. The second item is to provide a health subsidy for disability retirees with less than 10 years of service. We've had incidents, particularly for those, for some individuals where this is an issue. So it would require that at age 55, and for future retirees, the annual ongoing cost is approximately $100,000. This is for the new tier only.
Can you turn him up a little bit?
And the final, the final issue is specific to the men and women who are from our fire and police force and who go to Iraq or Afghanistan. The third item will allow survivors and members on military leave killed in the line of duty to qualify for a survivor benefit. And again, this is only for the new tier.
Very well. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, what we're doing is putting on the ballot a measure that says new hires. There is a 9% already, isn't it, by existing employees?
For the sworn, that's correct.
And what this does is for new hires, say, 9% plus 2% for health care.
That is correct.
So the difference is the 2% for health care?
That's one of the differences.
What's, what's another difference?
The other difference is that essentially today, the difference between retiring at 55, at approximately 25 years of age, and under our system, the one that we're proposing now, you would receive 10% less of your benefit under what we're proposing than under what exists today. So what this, what this plan does, it, it still allows you to retire at 90% after 33 years of service, but it basically encourages you to work longer and stay within our system longer, thus contributing more and generating savings in that way, to receive the same benefit if, under, if you were under the old system.
Okay, but this is for new hire?
This is, that's correct.
Okay, what about existing employees throughout our city paying more for their, their pension and more for their health care? I mean, I think it's terrific, but 2% isn't enough. We're not going far enough with our strategy in dealing with the budget deficit that we're going to face in the spring. Am I right on that?
We're--
Because we're not hiring that many people these days, and I don't know if we'll hire to attrition come after the first of the year. We have a cop class coming in in November, which I'm thrilled about, but the question for me, for the voter, basically, is, we don't want to cut back on any services of any kind, and the only way we can avoid firing more employees throughout the general thing is that we all pay more in our pension and in our health care. For instance, I would like to see a ballot measure that, that says existing employees have to pay 5% for health care. All of us, sworn and civilian, paid 5% for health care. That would save us $150 million. Am I right?
Approximately.
Okay, so that's real money, $150 million bucks. This is theoretical and hypothetical going forward with future employees. So the first thing I'd like to see, a discussion, if we could, this is a step, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't solve our deficit issue come next spring. All of us should pay more for our pension. For instance, right now, the coalition of the non-sworn is 6% goes to 7% in, in the next year. I want it to go to 10% for all employees in terms of their pension, and I would like all employees to pay 5% for health care. Now, just do the math on that. If all employees did 5% for health care, there's $150 million. If all employees, present employees, paid 10% for pension, what impact would that have?
Well, it would clearly have an enormous impact to our immediate crisis. The challenge is, is that we're limited on what we could do with current employees. It's very clear that is a meet-and-confer issue. Your directive has been to seek out for all, both sworn and civilian, a contribution towards retiree health, and we are, for those contracts that are open, we're engaged in that conversation today. As it relates to increasing the pension for, contribution for existing employees, you know, we run into that same issue on the like benefit, and you and I have talked about that. It, we're required to provide a benefit that basically is the same value of what they're being asked to contribute.
Yeah, which I just don't agree with. We can't have like benefits anymore. We're living in a different age than we did four or five years ago, and on the ballot for sworn should be, in my opinion, 10%. It's 5, it's 9% now. They've done more on pension reform in terms of their own commitment than any other part of the city. I mean, 9% better than the six or the seven. But I would like that to be 10% for existing employees, and I would like to see all existing employees pay 10%, and no like benefits. I'm sorry, we just don't have that ability anymore. And if we did 5% to our own health care, the combination of the two would be roughly $300 million, wouldn't it?
At least that.
At least $300 million, and we won't have to fire anybody next spring and cut back on services. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for, you know, being a great voice on continuing our conversations on pension. Just to make explicitly clear what I heard, though, is, could you legally go to a ballot to ask for changes? Could you legally go to the ballot and ask the voters to increase the amount that current employees pay from 9% to 10%? Is that legally possible?
It's, we run into the same issue of the like benefit, regardless of the vehicle to get it done, whether it's through ordinance or through a ballot measure. The city attorney has advised us that we would have to provide that employee a benefit that is the same value of the contribution--
Which would be a wash, probably, to our--
Would end up being a wash, correct.
Okay, so I want to be clear that even, no matter what our intentions are, we legally can't do that. Under national law, an earned property right--
State and federal.
State and federal law, that's an earned right, that's property. Somebody who's hired 30 years ago signs with the promise, "My pension will be--
But I would like that to be 10% for existing employees, and I would like to see all existing employees pay 10% and no like benefits. I'm sorry, we just don't have that ability anymore. And if we did 5% to our own healthcare, the combination of the two would be roughly $300 million, wouldn't it?
At least that.
At least $300 million, and we won't have to fire anybody next spring and cut back on services. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for, you know, being a great voice on continuing our conversations on pension. Just to make explicitly clear what I heard though, is could you legally go to a ballot to ask for changes? Could you legally go to the ballot and ask the voters to increase the amount that current employees pay from 9 to 10%? Is that legally possible?
It's, we run into the same issue of the like benefit regardless of the vehicle to get it done, whether it's through ordinance or through a ballot measure. The city attorney has advised us that we would have to provide that employee a benefit that is the same value of...
Which would be a wash probably to our...
Would end up being a wash, correct.
Okay, so I want to be clear that even no matter what our intentions are, we legally can't do that. Under national law, an earned property right, state and federal law, that's an earned right, that's property. Somebody who's hired 30 years ago signs with the promise, "My pension will be this amount if it's not negotiated away during those 30 years." Each year, you earn and you bank that. So that's why, when I made this speech, it was very important to say, "Who was here 20 years ago? Let's do the right thing together with our union partners for that, the city 20 years from now, because there will be another financial emergency, there will be another downturn in the economy. We pray and hope it won't come, but we know at some point it will come and we'll be better insulated." So I 100% support, but just want to be clear that legally, we can't do that on the ballot. So we can't actually go forward, we can't make that. And when there's 9% offered by a sworn, they also get more out of that than when the civilians pay 7% in, correct? So there's a like benefit that, or a parallel benefit essentially that they have.
Yeah.
Okay, so colleagues, we could negotiate however, what Mr. Rosendahl is talking about, right? You can negotiate that at the table, potentially. You can ask on healthcare, on other things, but that's the legal place to do it, not the ballot.
And we could do, and we are.
Okay, and have there been unions, for instance, that we have ratified their contracts in the last couple of months that have included changes to things like healthcare?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, just for clarity, and I appreciate Mr. Garcetti's comments here, but the bottom line is, we're putting on the ballot sworn, correct? Because that's what the ballot does, is deals with sworn. So the people can weigh in on safety issues, and that's their right, and I totally agree with it. But what stops us from looking at present employees and saying 10% and then also 5% for healthcare? What stops us from putting that on the ballot besides the politics around the room?
I mean, we could have the city attorneys be more specific, provide a more specific response.
It's not legal? If it's not legal, I just want to hear that because...
It's not legal. Madam City Attorney?
Well, Mary Jo Kerwin, Deputy City Attorney.
Ms. Kerwin.
Is that on?
There you go.
Okay. Well, in terms of new hires, you can put whatever contribution levels on the ballot that you wish to do. How are the existing employees, you have the vested pension right issue based upon the state and federal contract clauses in the Constitution. So that if you give, if you increase that, that's a disadvantage to employees, you have to give a comparable advantage and it has to serve some viable pension purpose.
Okay, let me just ask you this if I could, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Okay, so with future employees, we could put 5% for healthcare and we could put 10% for pension?
You can put in whatever...
For future?
Yes, for future, wouldn't you?
Okay, so that would be one thought to be clear about. Present sworn, who, by the way, had done more on pension reform than anybody else, and my hats go off to them, but for me to continue to want to hire more police, which I would like to and stay at the numbers we're at, I can't afford to do that next spring if we have another $300 million deficit. I mean, this is the reality I'm looking at from a business perspective. What could we put on the ballot for sworn, that existing employees, that would deal with this issue? Nothing?
Well, unfortunately, because of the Constitution clauses, it's not something that really, since you have to give something comparable in exchange, you'd have to find something to give them in exchange.
Well, how do we change that from being comparable? Because we're living in an age where we don't have the comparable ability. We have unemployment at the highest level since the Great Depression, where our middle class has been shipped overseas. It's going to take a while to build back our economic base, so how do we deal with it from a legal standpoint?
Well, I understand your concerns. Unfortunately, it's the contract clause in the state and federal Constitution, and those are not easily changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti? No other comments? I think you should mention that. I just wanted to mention that we have representatives from police and fire, that if we increase the deduction, health or pension contribution, that's coming out of their paycheck, and for the record, they haven't received a pay raise, an increase or a COLA in the last two years, and it's unknown if they're going to receive one next fiscal year. So I think you need to consider that. Any additional compensation out of their check is fewer dollars for them to live on. Just want to add that for the record. Ms. Miguel, you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, that matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very well, thank you. Number 12, request for number 12, and we have cards on number 12. Number 12. We have one card on number 12. We have another card on number 12. We have a few cards on number 12, just handed me. There's a whole bunch of cards on number 12 now.
No, 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 hold on a second.
The hearing was held?
Yeah, more than one hearing was held.
Do you wish to open it, Mr. Rosendahl, or?
President?
There's approximately 15 cards.
What is the breakdown of that?
I don't know. I just, I just received them.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, let me just say, I totally...
We've already heard you.
I know we've done a lot of public hearings on it, frankly. We've had the room packed before and we've discussed it, but the LATFA, as a courtesy, has asked me if they could have 10 minutes. And I've asked the cab industry if they want 10 minutes. They're not even sure they want any minutes, but I'd like to, out of respect, let them have 10 minutes.
So we'll do a minute, a minute apiece. We can do a minute apiece.
The question, 10 minutes period? Yeah.
All right, so start the clock. Bill Rouse, you get a minute apiece. Bill Rouse, you here? And following Mr. Rouse will be Michael Calvin, Callen.
Good morning, members of the council. I have given these comments before to T Committee, and I'm here to deliver them again. This is a decision between two different sides, and the issue is one of credibility. On one side, you have thousands of taxi cab drivers who've developed their business through this industry, hundreds of cab owners who, and current and former drivers, who have invested their life savings with confidence in this industry, cab company managers with decades of experience who have vested interest in the success of the drivers and who are directly answerable to the owners of this industry, democratic taxi organizations who've worked for decades to serve this city, transporting millions of passengers every year. You have a city staff which is top-notch, perhaps the best in the country. On the other side, you have a group of people with no experience in the taxi industry who are driven not by their concern for the driver's welfare but by their agenda, who rely on a UCLA study that has been completely discredited.
Thank you, Michael Callen.
Thank you.
Again, you get a minute apiece. Michael Callen. Michael Callen waves this time. Connie Gomez. Connie Gomez. Following Connie Gomez will be Ben Rockwell.
Good morning, honorable council members and guests. I am Connie Gomez, Abuelitos de Boyle Heights. It's my representation today, be here for support, Yellow Cab, because we're working for several years ago. This extraordinary service, we need to provide the comfortable service for my group because they need a wheelchair. I appreciate very much your support and continue with the concilio for five years. I appreciate very much. Thank you.
Ben Rockwell. Followed by Gerald Butler. Gerald Butler next.
Honorable council members, my name is Ben Rockwell. I have disability that is very visible, but I also have less than 40% of normal lung capacity. $2.5 million that is being given for a grant to get 50 new cabs that are accessible is very important, and we need these accessible green or cleaner air cabs so that those of us that have lung problems can breathe properly. Thank you.
Gerald Butler followed by Kevin Moore.
Good morning, my name is Gerald Butler. We're asking for five more years, and everybody who wants five more years, please stand up. The reason why we need these five years is so that we could put in our budgets, monies, so that we can operate in this city with clean air. It takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. We lose money by just jumping in, doing something that we have no control over. So please give us our five years. Thank you very much.
Kevin Moore. Kevin Moore followed by Mario Caldwell, Caldwell. Kevin Moore here? Kevin Moore? Is there a Kevin Moore here? No Kevin Moore. Mario Caldwell followed by Michael Guiller.
Yes, I'm Marion Caldwell, and I'm a consumer with Yellow Cab. I have been for the last six years. I was, have been, I'm a senior citizen and I'm also disabled. And when I was abruptly told that I could no longer drive, I had to find some way to get around. I have found Yellow Cab to be invaluable in getting me from my residence to destination, from my destination to my residence in a timely fashion. For me, it has been an excellent fit, and I support them for their five-year renewal.
Michael Guiller followed by Joe Linton.
Good morning, my name is Michael Guiller, United Independent Taxi. I live in the same city we all do. I breathe the same air you all do. I'm not opposed to cleaning up the air we breathe. However, I do, I do oppose the fact that implementation of this has not been thought out to the best extent that it should have been. These vehicles that you propose, they're extremely expensive, their technology has not yet been proven, and in public transportation applications, they have not, in fact, they have proven themselves to be problematic. I oppose this, this plan based on the way it's been presented. I'd like the council to consider a different alternative, another study, perhaps other vehicle options such as flex fuel and anything else such as lower mileage to help us. Thank you.
Joe Linton followed by Ahmed Khan.
Thank you, my name is Joe Linton from the Green Los Angeles Transportation Work Group. I want to encourage the council to not do the five-year extension, do a two-year extension for environmental reasons, that the, the city has changed a lot. If you read the LA Times on Sunday, we're shifting patterns in Los Angeles, we're building 3010, things are changing. If we lock into a five-to-seven-year contract on this, I think we lose a lot of leverage and we lock ourselves into a taxi system that doesn't serve the environment, doesn't serve the needs of Angelinos as customers, and doesn't serve drivers. So, thank you, please oppose the five-year and do the two-year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmed Khan followed by Betty Hung.
Good morning, council members. This morning, we saw you do your due diligence about the DWP pension plan, but unfortunately, when it came to immigrant workers, I think the city failed in conducting its due diligence. What we saw on October 13 was really special interests went out that day. In our estimation, almost $788,000 have been paid to lobbyists, which has been made on the backs of these taxi workers. So I think it was more a victory for, for the lobbyists than anything else. So today, we come to you, full council, as custodians of this public utility, to do the right thing and reject this five-year plan. There's no protections for the drivers, they continue to be retaliated against, they continue to be harassed, there continues to be a pattern of death threats. So we urge you to listen to the mayor's call and reach into your conscience as good custodians of this public utility, and make sure that these protections are incorporated and we have, we need financial transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please be orderly during the discussions, be respectful for your fellow individuals The following will be Ryan Erickson. Go ahead, ma'am. Betty.
Betty Hung, on behalf of the LA Taxi Workers Alliance. You have a choice before you to choose either a two-year renewal plus a study of best practices that would create the greatest taxi public utility in the nation, or a five-to-seven year renewal of the status quo that would betray the public trust. The same taxi company management who stand to benefit most from a five-to-seven-year renewal were found in a 2007 Controller chick audit to have pocketed thousands of dollars in undocumented cash payments that originated from a city mandated taxi fee paid by passengers at LAX. Monies from the traveling public were pocketed by these same taxi management who stand to benefit from this five-to-seven-year renewal, and that would betray the public trust. So we call on you to do the right thing and to also amend the franchises, which is allowable via city charter, under the city charter, to protect workers against retaliation and to seek financial transparency and accountability, to bring workers closer to living wage and keep money in their pockets while maintaining the need of race for customers.
Thank you, Ryan Erickson. Ryan Erickson followed by Adriano Martinez.
Hello, I'm with Gladsey Anderson Associates in Environmental Consulting, specializing in green vehicle technologies. I'm here to say that I did analysis on the plan that the, that the taxi cab companies have offered. That plan is to replace over 1,700 vehicles with green technology, which is well-proven. Toyota Priuses, Ford Escape hybrids, vehicles like that that everybody's driving every day on the roads. Those vehicles will produce a 42% reduction in smog-forming emissions and a 32% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions over the course of the five years. Additionally, it'll reduce 13 million gallons of petroleum with this five-year plan in these green vehicles. Also, to cost, the owner-operators will save over $34 million in fuel costs over the five-year plan with these green technologies because of their better fuel economy and cheaper fuel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adriano Martinez followed by Francis Nazarian.
Good morning, my name is Adrian Martinez, and I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council. The NRDC is actually opposed to moving forward with the five-year extension. One of the main reasons is a lot of the details of the greening plan haven't been fully fleshed out. For example, we are concerned that the city will be locking itself into certain types of vehicles that may be obsolete by the time 2016 rolls around. If we're all driving vehicles that get 24 miles per gallon in 2016, we'll be in a lot of trouble in reducing our dependence on foreign oil, reducing smog emissions and meeting our climate change goals. Accordingly, we suggest that the greening plan be fully developed before moving forward with the five-year franchise renewal to ensure that the city is embarking on the path to developing the greenest taxi fleet in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis Nazarian is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. As I've said before, I've been a cab driver with Yellow Cab for 10 years, work very underserviced areas and know what the passengers need there. They need these wheelchair-accessible vans. I'm one of the drivers who's been awarded one of the vans if the grant goes through, and this will not happen unless we get the five-year extension. So I'm pleading for the five years so we can get these people serviced and I can help do this. Also, I absolutely love my job. I want to continue to service everybody in the community, and we need this five-year extension for me to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is, that is the 10 minutes. I do want to be conscious though of making sure that we have folks, some folks, the way we usually do this is we make sure that fours and againsts can have some equal time, and I know we've had a little from both. Let me just count for a second to make sure we have that balanced out. And then some are just general comments, we know as well. So for that period, we had five, nine that were on the four side, one general comment, and we had four that were against. There's a couple more generals and against, and then we will close. Is that all right, Mr. Rosendahl?
If there are some more against, since there were nine, four, I wouldn't mind that there would be the equal amount.
Altai Asfaw is our next speaker, and then Stephanie Taylor. Good morning.
Hello, councilman. My name is Altai Asfaw. I'm driver and owner of the Yellow Cab. The green issue is very difficult for the owners. Owner-driver, he can afford the $35,000, $30,000. It's a benefit to the Yellow Cab management because they're going to finance us 20% and 30%. But we are the real driver, and we fight for this case for five years. Those purple T-shirts they have, they get paid and they came here, they are not the lease drivers, they are not the owners. We are, we need to investigate these things. This is paid every week, that's our money. Open the book and let's check the financial situation of the companies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, again, we don't take... Excuse me, we will take applause but no booing from the audience. If so, we will have to throw people out. Thank you. Stephanie Taylor is our next speaker.
Yes.
After that is Israel Tadese.
Good morning, I'm Stephanie Taylor, representing the Green LA Coalition. On behalf of the Green LA Coalition, the greening LA's taxi system is a top priority for environmentalists. However, environmentalists are against the proposed green taxi system because it simply preserves the status quo as you heard in previous comments. preserves the status quo, as you heard in previous comments. We believe that if we took the two years to complete a study on how to reform the system, and how to green the, green taxi system, we'd get a plan with better environmental benefits and better for the workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Israel Tedese.
Good morning. My name is Israel Tedese from Yellow Cab in the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. On this motion, if you vote yes, that means, which I doubt, only helping one millionaire, you're pushing him to billionaire. By voting yes to this motion, you are throwing the poor drivers to the train, trash, to the drain, and we are going to get poor and poorer and poorer. The 2,000 vehicles will never, will never change environment by .0001% out of 300 million of vehicle in Los Angeles. The tiny Japanese four-cylinder cars are not suitable for a taxi. We are just collecting trash from Japan. Those cars are for just housewife grocery shopping. Maintenance is very expensive. Just even to change the body, it costs from $3,500 to $4,500. This is a day's sentence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Centayehu Salasie, and then Getahun Asfa.
My name is Centayehu Salasie from Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. This is really, doesn't benefit the public, the city of Los Angeles, or the majority of the drivers. You are giving this to the loudest. The, I was really surprised when Councilman Paul Coricorian was talking about, my father was driving 30 years. I know nobody usually doesn't tell me this kind of, I mean, you know, what taxi drivers means is really what kind of statement it is. You could have said already, you know, something else. Anyway, really, this, we've been working on this. There are criminals in giving up, giving this five-years contract to, there are, you are deciding against the interest of the city of Los Angeles. I hope you will not approve this, and we support two years mayor's proposal.
Thank you. Getahun Asfa is next.
Yes, my name is Getahun Asfa. Thank you. Allow me to speak in front of you. I'm a great leader of Los Angeles City Councilmen's. I just want you to take this very cautiously. Think about it. I know your judgment won't be easy. It's hard for the peoples who work hard as this economy to put the green vehicles to the owners too expensive. And just think about a theory for the city, or for the people who's working on the street, driving every day. Some of us, we own one tax for like sharing, like we own it a partnership, even, even though even as one of us drivers. So please support us on this. I would support the mayor's proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker for general comments is Gennady Mirmishstein. Hope I did okay.
My name is Gennady Mirmishstein, and I just want to tell you that this car is very expensive, big impact on the owners' operators. You cannot calculate this impact. So what I'm asking you, just to understand that money is paid by the owners' operators, we totally depend from the company. Who get franchise, company get franchise. That's why I ask you just for one thing. Please make amendment that every, that structure could be changed with respect to existing ownership of the cab. That's mean you can regroup the companies during the franchise period, and city will have free hand to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will close our general public comment. We've submitted all the rest of the cards, and we apologize we couldn't get to everybody, but we thank you for those public comments. I'd like to recognize the chair of our transportation committee to begin with for six minutes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we ask staff to come on up to the table real quickly? Our colleagues, before us today, we have an item relative to our existing taxi franchises, which expire at the end of the year. We have to take action. It is an item we spent a great deal of time on deliberating in the transportation committee over multiple meetings with hours and hours of testimony in this chamber. I've met with drivers, I've met with advocates, I've met with staff, I've met with environmentalists, I've met with presidents of co-op, you name it, all in the interest of taking the time to appreciate their issues and arrive at a sound decision. The biggest point of contention has really been how long we renew these franchises for. Some have said, give us five years, give us some stability and certainty that we will green our taxi fleets. Others have advocated for a shorter timeframe of two years while we conduct a comprehensive study of our taxi regulatory system. But colleagues, in the face of dwindling resources, this two-year turnaround time is overly optimistic. And frankly, moreover, it doesn't take into account the structural changes that may have to occur within the department based on any recommended changes. So our two-year study and implementation looks, frankly, more like three or four more years. So we may not have 100% consensus on this issue today, but I believe we have a strong recommendation that balances the needs of all stakeholders involved. The customer, which comes first, the drivers individually, which are equally important to me as the customers, the industry as a whole, and the city, has last but not least our environment. Colleagues, we have an opportunity today to do something here in Los Angeles that has actually lagged for too long, and that is greening our taxi fleets. Cities all over the nation, and all around us locally, have made the move toward green cabs, and here in Los Angeles, we have continued to lag behind. Today, we have the opportunity to change the course and get a, get LA back on track. At this point, I want to know how many, you know, this is the second major meeting in this council today where the room is packed. This is democracy, frankly, at its best. How many are in the room who are drivers who believe the five years make sense? So with that, as a sense of where we are, I want to green the cabs, I want to move forward with this project, and I'd like to ask staff to give us a quick summary of the points, and especially you, Janine, about how we're going to get the greening going, and I'd like the overall sense from a legal standpoint, too. So let's each do a couple of minutes so my colleagues can get the full picture. But the truth of the matter is, we've waited long enough, we need to do the five years, and at the same time, Mr. Alakon has a motion that is going to be accepted, frankly, that talks about transparency, talks about retaliation, and frankly, we will go forward parallel with all of these other issues, because I never want to come to another meeting and hear people make indictments about people in this room. We're going to investigate it. I've talked to the controller. She will audit every one of these companies over the period of time, and we will get report backs every six months to the committee, and if anything is happening that's out of line, I want to hear about it. Because frankly, I believe in everybody in the room here, but I truly believe, colleagues, we need to move forward. But let's have a quick report. Thank you, Amir.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers. Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, LA Department of Transportation. I'm joined with Tom Drischler, our taxi cab administrator, and Janine Brands, and I appreciate and concur with one of the speakers that we do have, one of the best staff in the industry. And I also want to thank all the drivers, and literally both sides, because this has been an issue that's been very passionate, and I appreciate everyone coming to speak their, councilmember Rosendahl, you did a very good job, so I'm just going to keep it, you know, typically, taxi cab franchises were renewed or extended in the past by establishment of replacement franchise ordinances under the same terms and conditions, and that's an important factor as the original ordinances. So this was done in 1989, 1994. You know, back in 1998, we did a full two-year study. We came up, there was a refranchising in LA that, that was, you know, 10 years. In 2008, we began the same process and put together a very comprehensive scope of work. We involved all the different groups, enhanced that scope of work, put it out to bid, awarded that contract, and three months into it, this council directed the general manager to cancel that contract. So we weren't able to get all of the information before you in a way of what regulatory schemes may work or not. Past, move forward, I think it's important for this council to understand that if there is not a franchise in place, meaning the ordinance written, the votes are there, by December 31, which is New Year's Eve at midnight, if we don't have this, if this council doesn't act, there will be chaos in the city of Los Angeles. You won't have a regulated taxi cab industry come New Year's Eve. So it's very important to understand that as you move forward with whatever decisions you're about to make. So the recommendations, I believe, are before you is, was vetted fully in four hours at the transportation committee. I think it puts together all of the different scopes that's been discussed, and with that, I'm going to, and I think the other thing that was really important for the council, for the T-Committee and for this council to understand is the teeth. This current ordinance has the teeth and ability to make sure that the greening components are done, and I'm going to turn over now to Janine Brands to just quickly explain the greening components, and then we'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Yeah, and in that context, Janine, we did have discussions with our federal representative about support to help green the cabs, but the bigger issue for everybody here is, A, I don't want a burden on the driver, and two, I want to actually get the greening done. So share with us the steps we will take.
All right. Under the existing terms and conditions of our franchises, the board by resolution can mandate an increase in the percentage and amount of clean-fueled vehicles. All right? We're going after smog pollution, we're going after greenhouse gas, both of them. Our industry has the ability to buy used vehicles, Toyota hybrids, Priuses, Ford Escape hybrids, that are now very, very cost-effective, and the fuel savings that the driver has when they drive those vehicles is going to more than pay that amount. There will be a lease surcharge on these drivers. Typically, I'm going to give you an example, a Toyota Prius is what we call a SUELEV emission. The Crown Vics that we're driving around now are LEV, so that's smog pollution. We're not just doubling, we're quadrupling our amount of improvement and reduction in smog pollution. These Toyota Priuses are 45 miles per gallon typically driven compared to 14 miles per gallon. When you use less fuel or an alternative fuel, you're going to improve your greenhouse gas emissions, and we're going for both of those. These vehicles are used right now at about 14,000, 15,000. The Crown Vics and the minivans are 7,000 to 10,000 typically, so there is an added cost. The driver, let it be a lease driver and owner, when they drive that Toyota Prius, is going to make an additional reduction in their revenue that they spend every week by about $120 to $140. The typical extra lease charges are about $10 a day, or half that. So that's going to go to the owner of that vehicle that has to pay that extra $7,000 approximately for that used vehicle.
Do you know that GM and Ford, two American companies, have quickly been moving into the greening, so it isn't just coming from overseas, the opportunity to get vehicles?
Absolutely. And we don't want just hybrids, we want more CNG vehicles. There are more and more types of vehicles coming out all the time. That means there's going to be more and more new and used all the time. We're looking to find out any way that we can help them purchase these vehicles, whether it's pots of money from regional sources, and we are looking that we're going to have a little bit of money next year, and then we'll try to incorporate more in fiscal years to come. We're also going to work with everybody to see if there's some small business loans to help these guys. But basically, typically, the amount of savings that the driver has, part of that's going to go back to the owner for that decreased amount of fuel that they have to purchase, and after about two years, that extra vehicle cost is paid for. We're finding, especially with the Priuses and some of the other hybrids out there, that they're working out marvelously in other cities. We're behind every other city directly around us in the nation, in Canada. The vehicles are working, the maintenance has not been an issue.
But isn't Jim Clark also looking at federal money that could help us and expedite it faster?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, we have our own environmentalists and Jim Clark, and anything that we can get to start this program next year, and we do believe later on next year, we're going to have some money to help them a little bit, and the amount of extra surcharge on the lease is going to also go back to the owners. And the drivers, especially with the Prius, might end up with a little bit more money in their pocket as well, and everybody gets a little something. But most importantly, we go green. The green vehicles are there. We're not going to make them buy just new ones. If they want to buy a new one, that's fine, but there's more and more used vehicles, and it's going to get easier and easier as we go along. So the board, by resolution, just as it says in the franchise ordinance, will set the new mandates for the new program for the next five years for a five-year renewal. The companies have to sign a letter that they accept the new terms and conditions, which are exactly the same as the old, because they have the authority to increase it, but they'll know exactly what the green program is, they'll sign that they'll adhere to it. And the board has all the teeth, as Amir was talking about, to set penalties, suspensions of service, and recommend revocation to you if they don't follow the greening program as laid out. So they're going to see it. If they don't want to sign and say that they can do it, that's okay, they don't have to, and they won't be here on January 1st. But our companies know that greening is here. They told us a year ago they're ready. They're doing it in every other city where they have permit around us. We can go green, and like I said, it's not just smog pollution, it's greenhouse gas. I want both, and I want it now. They can do it, we want to make it reasonable. We're talking about for, and as it is, I'll number one for the greening, when it talks about it today, it's 80% of the non-exempt vehicles, I want to make that clear. We have about, almost 10% of our vehicles are wheelchair-accessible. We have a grant coming, and we're going to get 50 more. So it's like 9.4. Those don't have to be green. So you take that number out of all the remaining, out of 23, 53 vehicles, you take out the 222 wheelchair, you get 2,131 vehicles, and I want 80% of those vehicles to be green in five years. Okay? We still need larger minivans, and we'll ask for the cleanest that we can get, and other large-capacity, large-volume vehicles out there for the airport trips and the school runs and so forth. We still need to meet all our service demand. So when you're all said and done, you'll have about 70, 72% of all your vehicles green over five years. We can't wait. Let's go for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Alakon. Wait, wait. Mr. Alakon. Sure. Sorry? Did you? Okay.
Judith Reel, Deputy City Attorney.
Sorry, Mr. Alakon. We'll write after the city attorney.
We've reviewed the committee's report and recommendation, and believe it complies with the Charter sections regarding replacement renewal of franchises.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
That attorney obviously doesn't get paid by the word. Members, I agree with and voted for the, the contract, the five-year agreement in committee, but have since been approached to, to support in a effort to ensure there's no retaliation relative to certain activities. So I'm introducing a friendly, what I hope is a friendly amendment, to request that the Transportation Committee draft and promulgate a voluntary labor relations provisions for taxi cab drivers and seek voluntary compliance of franchises. I want to make that clear, that we, since we cannot change the agreement, we are seeking voluntary compliance on these issues. I have the, this motion has, is circulated as 12A, so basically, it protects against retaliation when somebody has made a complaint to the franchise, an agent of the franchise or government agency, when they are involved in political activities, such as the many people are involved right now, they shouldn't be retaliated against, and if they are participating in a community organization that seeks to improve working conditions for taxi workers, they shouldn't be retaliated against providing assistance or causing to institute any investigation, proceeding under related, under, or related to the franchise ordinance or municipal, state and federal laws. In any case, this is just a simple effort to have the chair of the Transportation Committee work with the contractors to seek voluntary compliance on, on all these non-retaliatory efforts. So with that, the motion was seconded by Janice Hahn, and I offer it as a friendly amendment.
Thank you very much. Okay. Amendment, and as I said earlier, we will continue to monitor this over the months and years ahead, and I appreciate that motion.
Okay. If there's no objection from any, if there's no objection from any council members, that will be accepted as friendly, and Mr. Cardenas is next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A subset of the report is in fact instructions to the department to go ahead and renegotiate these contracts slash get the contracts signed with the new provisions of the greening requirements, et cetera. I mean, that's just generic terms, but that, the contracting responsibility is a subset of the item. And the question to the city attorney is, as Councilmember Alakon just clarified, his amendment is not an amendment to the contract, but it's an amendment to the report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that being the case, what this amending motion basically does is, it's asking, it's requesting that the Transportation Committee go ahead, that the Transportation Committee go ahead and adopt some language, offer that language to the franchisees so that they could consider whether or not they would like to voluntarily sign on to it, correct?
Right.
And that would be separate and apart from the contract in and of itself?
Correct, Councilmember, that motion could be made even while franchises don't need to be renewed. This is a separate path, it's apart from the franchise agreements themselves.
So we just happen to be enacting both of the requests and action at the same time?
Yes, correct.
But the actual amendment is not an amendment to the contract or the process, it's actually an opportunity for voluntarily, voluntary action should each individual contractor decide to go ahead and attest to that and assign to it?
That is correct.
Okay, that's one of the things I wanted to clarify. So with that, I support the, as listed as amending motion 12A. But also, I'd like to point out, the actual action in chief that we're actually enacting today is to go ahead and take the opportunity to extend up to five years contracts with our current franchise companies. But at the same time, what we're actually doing is making sure that the main portion of the fleet, not necessarily the vans, because the, not, the ADA accessible, wheelchair-accessible vans, or the other large vans, when that, when that technology and opportunity to fortify them and green those up, when that happens, then that'll trigger for them to go ahead and start greening up those separate vehicles, correct? But when it comes to the basic fleet of taxicabs in the city, this automatically requires them to green them up to 80% and reach the 80% mark on the main fleet, correct?
Yes, and the non-exempt vehicles, outside of the wheelchair-accessible.
Correct. And as it stands right now, it's over 1,700 vehicles. That's a lot of carbon reduction, and that's a wonderful thing, not only for the city of Los Angeles, but actually for the entire world. And I really enjoy the opportunity to be a proper demonstration to our fellow cities and other jurisdictions, and encouraging and letting them know, when the second-largest city in the country does it, that they should figure out a way to do it as well. And we're more than happy to help discuss that with other interested parties, correct?
Right.
Thank you for that as well. And also, I'd like to thank the person who seconded the motion, Councilmember Krikorian, and I wanna also thank him for lending his expertise and his personal experiences to this, because he knows a lot more about taxicab drivers and a lot more about what it is to be in that business than I do. So I just wanna thank you so much for lending, not only lending, but actually supporting this and actually helping to get to this point. So thank you so much.
Mr. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really wanna thank Councilmember Rosendahl for the long, hard journey that has brought us to this place today, and I, you've done a great job, and I appreciate the fact that you started off by saying I've really met with everybody, I've heard everybody's concern, and I know I've spent a lot of time as well talking to taxicab owners and drivers, and there are some issues today that are of concern to many of us, which is why I seconded Mr. Alakon's motion that we will take back to committee the idea of bringing up the concerns about the workers' rights, the workers' conditions, labor relations, and we hope that we can draft language separately, that we can take back to the franchisees and ask if that would be something they would be willing to work on with the drivers. We want our drivers happy, healthy, well-paid, and working in good conditions. We want all of our drivers. Because I think that the taxicab drivers are really the face of hospitality in Los Angeles. You really are many times the first person that people meet when they come to Los Angeles, or the last person to drop them off before they go back home on a long trip. Your well-being is really important to us, and I hope what we're doing today will put us on a path to make sure that we really arrive at the place where all of our drivers are healthy and happy. I love the idea that we're gonna do this. I'm gonna vote for this five-year extension. Because I believe that the benefit back to us in Los Angeles is huge, and I appreciate the way we're working this out. For a five-year extension with an option of another two years, we've got a guarantee of 80% of the fleet that will be green, and I think that is a great thing for Los Angeles to do. That really puts us in the taxicab industry, really kind of where our hearts are in every other industry. We're about green power, we're about greening the Port of Los Angeles, we're about greening the trucks that carry the cargo to and from the Port of Los Angeles. So this really is in line, I believe, with the philosophy of this city council. I like the fact that part of this five-year extension will help us to lock in and ensure that, I believe it's a $2.5 million grant for wheelchair-accessible taxicabs. I think that's very important to show our commitment to those with disabilities in Los Angeles. So I think this is a good idea, I think this is smart, I appreciate us getting to this point. I would like us to continue to move towards making sure we address some of the concerns that have been voiced here today, but I don't think we should hold up this extension as a result of that. One of the things I would add as, just as a friendly amendment or as a challenge, one of our council members, Jan Perry, sits on the AQMD board. I know that the state of California funded AQMD with a grant that went to the Port of Los Angeles to subsidize the purchase of green trucks in the harbor area. Is there an opportunity for us to move in that direction as well, to get skate money through AQMD that would maybe come to the city of Los Angeles to help subsidize the purchase of these new vehicles? However, I will say, the bottom line and doing the math on the savings for the fuel is so important for taxi drivers and owners to hear, that the savings in fuel will actually help cover the cost, but if we can help also get some funding to help subsidize the purchase of these green vehicles, I think we should go in that direction. And I know I'm over, I'll say one more thing. When I have the opportunity, when I'm traveling to take a taxi, and if I have the opportunity to pick between a Crown Vic and a hybrid car, I will pick the hybrid car. I drive one personally, I drive one professionally, and that's the kind of car I wanna choose when I take a taxi. So I think they are, they are user-friendly, they are customer-friendly, and I think people, if they have the opportunity, they wanna continue their commitment to the environment when they hire a taxi. So I think this is the perfect situation, and I'm gonna vote for it today.
Mr. Krikorian, followed by Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think much of what I need to say has been said, but just to put this very simply and clearly, if we wanna move forward with a conversion to green cabs, there is going to be an investment involved in that. The only way that that investment makes sense is with a five-year extension. It won't happen with a two-year extension. So we need a five-year extension in order to make this investment. If we are going to be eligible for the $2.5 million in federal funding to support much-needed service to our disabled community and an expansion of the availability of vehicles to serve the disabled, we must have a five-year extension. A two-year extension will not justify that federal funding. If we are going to maintain stability and predictability in our taxi-transportation system in this city, as staff has said, as people around the horseshoe has said, we must have a five-year extension. This system is working, it provides equitable taxi service to all parts of this city, and that's what we need to have going forward. The drivers here, all of the drivers here, work incredibly hard. This is a tough, tough job, we all know that. But it's also a way that through hard work and through efforts, many of these drivers are able to provide a better upbringing for their family and to enter the middle class. Mr. Cardenas made a reference to me and my experience. I've never driven a cab, but my dad did, and so I have a special sensitivity to making sure that we ensure the well-being of these drivers. And I want to thank Mr. Alakon, actually, for bringing those issues forward today so that we can continue to work on them. But today, the essential thing before us is ensuring that we move forward with this very visionary, very progressive, green cab policy. And you know, I wanna say, Mr. Rosendahl, as chair of the T-Committee, has done an absolutely masterful job of taking in input from not both sides, every side of this issue, and there are many, many viewpoints. We've, this is now the third time that this chamber has been filled to the rafters with people who wanted to offer comments, and Mr. Rosendahl has taken all the time necessary to hear from everyone, and this is not done often enough, in my view, in this chamber. And so, Mr. Rosendahl, I just have to say, this is the way that good policy should be made, and I wanna really thank you for the time that you've devoted to ensuring that we did a very thorough job on this. And Mr. Cardenas, as the mover on this also, this has been a great collaborative effort, and our staff has been, for many, many, many months on this, doing an absolutely thorough job, a fair job, an analytical job of the kind that I wish we would have more of when we're making policy here. This is the way policymaking should be done, that's why it got a unanimous vote in support in the Transportation Committee. I hope it'll have a unanimous vote today in council as well, so that we can send a strong message that we're committed to being green, we're committed to our disabled community, we're committed to these drivers, and we're committed to good policymaking. Thank you.
Mr. Parks is next. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to clarify one thing before I get to my comments. Mr. Alakon, on your 12A, I just wanna ask, the way it's written, whether this ever comes to committee to be reviewed as to the substance of the proposals before it goes out to the industry? Because the way it's written is that the Taxi Commission will redo and review and adopt voluntary provisions, and should the franchises not voluntarily adopt the Transportation Committee request. So I'm just gonna find that if these things, because it could be expanded upon, but will these recommendations come to T-Committee to finalize them before they go out to the industry? Is that the intent?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question. Are you asking if the final recommendations will come back to T-Committee?
T-Committee before they go to the industry, because it appears we're saying to the Taxi Commission, send them out, and if they don't voluntarily adopt them, it doesn't appear that there's a role for the T-Committee.
Well...
Are we saying today the T-Committee's approving these?
I believe anything that the Taxi Commission does is reviewable by the committee, so that was my intent, so I have no problem with the matter.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that it's coming to T-Committee before it goes to the industry.
If you wanna insert it in the language, that's fine with me.
Okay, thank you, I just, very, very, all right. Okay, let me just say this, I wanna thank LADOT and the city attorney and everybody that's had a role in this, and particularly Mr. Cardenas for his motion. It's come together in the sense of a cost-neutral approach to bringing not only the franchises together for five more years, getting green cabs, about 80% of them. But I think the issue that's important to me is that we get back in, before this franchise, five years is up, and we have that study that was prematurely aborted, that we get it done. We've asked that the franchises, which I think comes out to something like $5,000 a year over five years, to pay for that study, so the city should not have to go out and find funds for it. We hope that they voluntarily do that. We want to make sure that the issue of LADOT is developing guidelines and a scope and a timetable to get that study done, so we do not end up with five years over and then come back and find out there's nothing to go to. The other issue that, in the committee report, there's about six or eight things that we ask to be put into that greening standards plan, and that we make sure that we are clearly articulating the mandates for emissions, that we have the enforcement criteria, we talk about the five-year extension, the percentage of mandatory greening per year, franchises funding the regulatory study, and that the funding source for the taxi fleet greening, that we ensure that it's clear that that's on the franchises and not the city. But we also wanna make sure that the Taxi Commission takes on the role of working with the mayor's office to seek out those RFP funds, and so we talked about state funds, variety of ways in which we can bring funds to help subsidize for cab drivers and owners their ability to get to that green cab, greening objective. The other issue, as part of the report, we talked about two pieces of legislation that are at the federal level, and that today we, CLA produced a motion for us for the HR 3711 and Senate Bill 1741, that basically prescribes requirements for fuel efficiency for taxicabs. We wanna go on record that the city of L.A. supports that legislation, and so today that motion was going forward. So I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you, because I think this is, everybody's gonna benefit from this, and we will clearly identify that LADOT does not have the staff to have gone in another direction of going through an RFP process, and then when we completed that RFP process, we wouldn't have the study to determine what changes we should or should not make. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was in the chamber at the last massive hearing in the committee, and I know that there was a representative from the South Coast Air Quality Management District present at that time, and I believe that he did speak on the record, I think his last name was Saito, and I would just like to ask if someone can paraphrase what he said on the record with respect to what AQMD can do to support this effort?
Councilmember, I'm not sure if we have the paraphrasing, but our staff is working with the different sources of fund, we're working with the SCAG, the air quality, we're looking at mobile source funds. Actually, we're gonna be before you possibly with some monies that we found, we're trying to finalize that.
Overall, he did indicate that there were some opportunities there at AQMD and their willingness to work with us.
Yes, and we're definitely looking at that option. There are some, both local money and regional monies, and we're gonna apply for those grants. We're going after anything else we can, as Councilmember Parks mentioned, working with the mayor's office on RFP and some other funds. So we understand how important this is, so any way we can find some subsidy for these drivers, we're gonna do it.
Well, I just wanted to add, I'd be, as the board representative for the city on the AQMD board, I would be happy to work with Mr. Rosendahl and with the department to help facilitate that, not only on this side of the equation, but on the AQMD side.
Thank you, we will do that.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, I'll be brief. I just, I spoke the first time just to introduce the amending motion, but I also wanted to comment that this is a bigger issue than, than, than what we have before us today. And the fact of the matter is that the taxi service in Los Angeles is a responsibility of the city government, just as much as our library service or any other service we provide to the community. It is essential for the well-being of our community for us to have an effective taxi program. That's critical. The other thing is, we also have a responsibility to ensure that our economy is doing well and that businesses are thriving. These are businesses, so everything we talk about in terms of supporting businesses, and my committee, the Business Development Committee, has worked on the film industry, we're looking at the restaurant industry, we're even looking at new car dealerships. But I also wanna say that now, as a result of the motion I introduced, we are also going to look at the taxi industry and the businesses that are here and the 2,000 businesses that are represented in this industry in these franchise agreements. We need to support them as much as we support other businesses with economic development dollars. And so, in my committee, we will be... my committee, we will be looking at whether we can use Community Development Block grant money to create a revolving loan fund that will enable them to purchase their cars and work with the financing programs that they already have, to see if maybe we can support those financing programs with city dollars, and in doing so, solidify an industry by providing support to those who might be in jeopardy of being able to comply with this contract. And so, this is just the first step. This is just, this sort of sets the table for the jobs, but it doesn't finish our task. Our task is to try and make these people healthy and happy, as Janice Hahn said. That is critical. They can't do that if they're worried about paying their bills and they can't afford the new car that they're required to purchase. So with that, I commit to you, as Chair of the Jobs and Business Development Committee, that we will hear that matter quickly. We've already been in discussions with the Community Development Department. But I also want to extend that discussion to the Air Quality Management District, which I also used to serve on, Ms. Perry, and say that we might be able to create a program that goes far beyond what we've done today. So congratulations, Mr. Rosendahl, for, I know you put up with a lot of craziness on this issue, and that's always the case with this particular issue. But I think the final product is one that can set the tone for the next five years and maybe seven. And if we do it right, we can improve the quality of the taxi service that the people of Los Angeles are receiving.
Thank you. Janice, Philip Zine is our next speaker. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have support for what these folks are doing. I support Mr. Rosendahl and all of the comments that are of positive nature. And you know, Tom, I've had an issue with the banded cabs, which are hurting these legitimate folks. Are we making success in that category? And is there something we can do to help these folks with what they're doing? And the banded operations that really hurt these folks financially and otherwise, are we making headway in that?
Yes, we are making headway. We've had unprecedented numbers of arrests and impounds in the last few years. There are still a few areas where we probably could use some help. We have drafted an ordinance that would basically make it illegal, and it's an ordinance similar to what you find in other cities like San Diego, where a doorman or someone else controlling the gate at a particular venue cannot just run a racket and extort money from taxi drivers. We have that draft ordinance. It's already been approved by the Taxi Cab Commission. We're waiting to get it back from the City Attorney so that we can get it before your council. That would be very effective.
I just want to make sure that we're on target, we're on focus, because every banded cab we take out of business puts the passengers in those legitimate cabs that are serving the public.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, to conclude.
Thank you very much. And folks in the room, you saw me running around a little bit, this and that. It's basically to talk to everybody, see if everybody can get on the same wavelength, see if we can all work together as a team. So here's who wins on this. First of all, the overall population wins on the greening of the cabs. So when we breathe, our lungs might not have as much pollution. And that's for everybody, okay? Secondly, we're given the customer who gets in there, people with disabilities continue to get more cabs that will service their needs. And all of us, as customers, want to be in a cab where we feel positive attitude. Third, it's the driver. Everybody in here who's a driver, we care about you as much as we care about the customer and the environment. And fourth, Mr. Alarcon was just saying about business, 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 we've got to keep our businesses going forward. So at this point, I ask colleagues, thank you so much for this healthy interaction. I want to thank everybody in the room for making the democracy work, and I would like an eye vote on this motion to go forward with five years.
Thank you. That is our last speaker. There's no objections. We have, as amended, Mr. Rosendahl, and the report that is before us is moved by Mr. Rosendahl. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And we will... Next, thank you all very much. We appreciate your patience in making sure you could be here, and thank you for that work. If I can ask folks to keep their conversations until they leave the room. We appreciate you. Mr. Parks wanted to reconsider item 36. There was a technical amendment supported by the CAO. So let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. Parks, if you'd like to read that amendment into the record on item 36, please.
On item 36, 36A.
Hold on, hold on one second, just so folks can hear. All right. Good. Thank you for your understanding. There's an amendment that the CAO and Mr. Parks have on item 36.
[shooting sounds]
Thank you. Mr. Parks, go ahead.
This is a technical amendment to allow the pension for fire police to create their own pension stabilization ability. And so I just have the pension and CAO and everyone's in agreement with it. It's, we had intended to have this as an amendment to the original document, but unfortunately, it was sent to committee. We wanted to correct it today, and so we asked the Pension Department to really explain this for us. Okay?
Give us a quick explanation of that. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Bill Roggio. I'm an Assistant General Manager with the Fire and Police Pension Department. At the risk of getting into the weeds too far here with pension administration, typically a pension board has responsibility for the funding policy of a retirement system. Currently, LASERS and DWP Retirement System has complete authority in this area. The funding policy is comprised of three components. There are the actuarial cost method, asset smoothing method, and amortization policy. Our board currently has authority over the first two, but it does not have discretion over amortization policy. It's codified throughout various sections of the charter. What we're looking to do, this is something we've been working on for quite a while. So with pension reform going to the voters in March, we thought it'd be a good time to include this, to take that out of the charter and give that authority to our pension board. And it's really just another dial for the pension board to use in determining contributions from the city.
Thank you.
Can we ask for an eye vote on this technical amendment?
Okay. There's no objection. We'll amend that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is approved. If we can take up one, and then if we can take 11 out of order after that.
Item one was called special by Counselmember Labange.
Tom Labange, number one.
Chair of the committee?
Oh, yes, please. Chair of the committee will open on item, item one.
Thank you, members. I didn't intend to call this special, but I just wanted to explain what this is. This is a motion that was unanimously supported by council to extend a fee waiver for municipal facilities relative to filming at city facilities. This would extend the provision for four years. It's part of the 19 actions that we took quite a while back, to, almost a year ago. In fact, it was a year ago that we voted to support 19 recommendations relative to improving film shooting in Los Angeles. In this particular case, we'd be waiving fees that essentially, over a three-year period, amounted to $292,000 or approximately $97,000. And of course, the theory is that if we continue to improve in the film industry, our relationship with the film industry, to the extent that they understand that we want them to film in Los Angeles, that we will easily get more fees than $97,000, not to mention all the other benefits, the job creation, the sales tax revenue from the consumer purchases of those workers. And so, the $97,000 will be easily covered. The one thing that I did want to mention is that New York City just voted to create a uses fee for municipal buildings. In fact, they hadn't had one, and we were not competitive with them in that regard, but they voted for fees up to $3,500 per use. This is sending a message that we want filming in Los Angeles, and we are creating, we believe that the industry is tilted toward us anyway because of our tremendous quality of workmanship that is centered here in the Los Angeles area. But by taking the actions to eliminate fees for four years on municipal buildings, we are sending a message when other cities are in fact creating new fees for filming. And so, for that reason, the committee felt very strongly that we should extend the waiver and continue to send a positive message to the film industry. We want them to produce in LA.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I think there's a value that all of, I don't think anybody in this council chamber is anti-filming at all. And many have done additional work. Mr. Kocorian, from your work in the state, Mr. Alarcon on this issue here, Mr. Garcetti always in the Hollywood area. So this is important. I just want us to know if someone from city staff on things, how, who is our agent, who helps promote to say, "Come film in LA"? Who goes out and knocks on the door and says, "Look, there's a great location in the third floor corridor of City Hall"? Who does all that? And maybe Mr. Miller will answer, because I think it's very important that we continue to have a clarion call, if that's the right word, to the industry that we want them here. There's two things I really like in Los Angeles. The first one is a yellow sea of school buses, whether it's at a zoo or exposition park, or anything at the beach where kids get to see and experience things from their school. The other thing I like is I do like to see companies, movie companies, working in town. We do have to balance issues out, because sometimes they impact neighborhoods, and that gets balanced out. But I love to see when we're circled in this building with movie trucks. And I think there's no other square footage of a location that's been filmed more than our rotunda out here, in my mind, in every kind of movie that they've ever made. Mr. Miller, that sounds like a movie.
Well, in terms of this building, I think that was your question. I mean, it really comes down to the council's film-friendly policies, the fees that are charged, et cetera. The coordination is done through General Services, through...
Well, I remember there was Charlie Weinberg and a Mr. Bradley who was very effective. Who's the one person here that's out doing the work? I know we do legislation, but who's the person? Is there a deputy mayor? Is there a Public Works Commissioner? Who's the one person there?
Yes, there's a Public Works Commissioner. There's a deputy mayor. We've, of course, got Film LA, which also markets the city, coordinates, permitting, works on location, identification, and all that.
Yeah. I forget. I saw John Candy film last night. I couldn't sleep. And all they did is shoot on the Sixth Street Bridge. And it was unbelievable that they were using that, and so important. What do they have, what do they charge on streets? Is this exempt them from city streets? Do we know? Any of the costs? Because I think, I think it was on the film. I just want to make sure we get the word out on this.
Can I answer your question?
Sure, but I was looking for city staff. The city staff, if you want to...
Mr. Labange, do we have a city staff person here? Not, you have 20 seconds left on your time.
Well, here's the film administration. Just tell us what your role is, so we know that we're doing a job that we were set out to do. Because I still hear from people who are in the film industry who think we're not doing enough. But there's a lot that we are doing. Sixth Street Bridge, all over.
My name is Eva Bittar, and I'm with the City Administrative Office. We work closely with the film industry through Film LA, with the CLA, with the Jobs Committee, through Councilmember Alarcon's office. We've been administering different incentives for the industry. We have a task force agenda of where the industry comes and gives us their ideas of what they would like changed. And collectively, we've all been working to work with all the various departments to make changes. They have been very pleased with the progress, but we continue to make sure that we have addressed every aspect that's necessary.
Good. Just keep doing it. Keep doing it.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Labange, thank you very much. And if you want to speak again, press your button. Mr. Corretts, before you go, Mr. Alarcon wants to make a quick response to, I think, a question from Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the primary responsibility for marketing the film industry is with Film LA. We voted to budget a portion of their, allocate a portion of their budget of city money for a marketing program, which will be coming out in December. They are working on that. In addition to that, relative to location identification, we have, the Film LA organization has created a mapping system that identifies key locations throughout the city. And we can do this with each and every one of your districts, and I encourage you to work with Film LA if you think there's a particular location that works well for citing of filming opportunities. And it's not the places that you necessarily think of. Of course, in my district, I have the San Fernando Mission, but sometimes they're looking for a junkyard on San Fernando Road. And so, you never know what might be of interest to them. But certainly, when you work with the location managers, and we are working with the location managers to help us with that mapping system, each and every one of you will have access to that and should work with Film LA for, to help your districts promote the film industry by identifying the locations. Those are two ways that we're continuing to move forward with them.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you. I think we all agree on the importance of this, so I won't belabor that point. I just have a question. I think in an earlier discussion, we had, it was said that there are some parts of the city family that don't participate in this, like some of our recreation and parks locations. I think people were complaining that we still charge a large amount of money to film at Griffith Park, for instance. I don't know if this is still the case, or if this is wrapped up in this measure. So, I don't know, Mr. Miller, Mr. Alarcon, who knows the answer to that? But I wanted to see if that was wrapped up in this, if we could wrap it up in this and include more.
If you want me to.
Well, he asked me first, so...
No, Richard, it's my district, so hold on.
No, it's not your district. It's Citywide Mission.
Yeah, but you have to be first.
Mr. Labange, please, let him speak on his time.
Here's the thing. The issue of, is that...
Press your button again. Press your button again.
What was the question?
Okay, we're actually on...
Could the park other places, whether we...
No, not Griffith Park. I'm not going to speak specifically to Griffith Park.
Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Alarcon, can you wait a minute? Mr. Alarcon, can you wait a minute? Mr. Corretts, we were on his time.
Yes.
Were you done, Mr. Corretts?
I only had that one question, trying to figure out whether we could add locations.
Let me make a suggestion to you. Then you're going to let Mr. Alarcon use your time, then. We don't do that. We don't do that here. So if your time is done, Mr. Alarcon, just for the record, would you just press your button again, and I'll call on you after Mr. Labange, okay? Otherwise, this cross-conversation...
I just asked, I asked a clarifying question on my own time. I've never heard an answer.
I will get you an answer. But let's go in order, please, so everybody gets a chance. Does someone have a response to Mr. Corretts's question?
Yes, Griffith Park has lowered their fees by 50%. We've been working very closely with Wreckin' Park. The Assistant General Manager through the task force has made a presentation to the industry, and all rates were dropped by 50%. Do you want to know the rates? It's approximately, if you're doing inside the Griffith, if you're using internal and external, it's about $12,500. If you're just doing internal, it's 10. I'm sorry?
How do we get to zero?
You'd have to find them some money.
Do we have to do that, or can we include it in this measure and not have to fund it?
Well, that issue is entirely up to the council, but obviously, that revenue goes towards Wreckin' Park's operations. So if you charge nothing at Wreckin' Park's facilities, then that money would have to be backfilled, or reductions would have to be made.
Well, it's one of those things that cuts both ways. So when you have more filming, you obviously bring in more money. I think it's a net savings, and I think we all agree on that, or we wouldn't be doing this in other locations. We don't talk about backfilling General Services Department when we allow filming at City Hall. So I'm not sure why we exclude parts of the city family and not others.
Mr. Labange, and then...
Madam CAO, speak of the Griffith Observatory, because that's what the charge is. There's, not in the park itself. The charge is for the Observatory, which is a working museum, a working astronomy center on that issue there. That is what that is about. That has been reduced. Also, with sensitivities of the activities of the zoo, they work around it on that. So they work with the people on that, but it has been reduced. Also, Recreation and Parks and their commission have separate powers to act on behalf of their interests for the park system, and it has been reduced greatly. And the reason why I called it up, especially in the first place, started all over this morning, was to articulate that, especially about the Observatory, which we were... morning, was to articulate that, especially about the observatory, which we restored. And companies, when they do choose to suit at that location, do pay that as a part of the help to get children from districts throughout the city to the observatory. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Alarcon, did you want to add anything? No? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Corretts, again.
Not to be the dead horse, but just to make that point, this is a beautifully restored city hall. It's a working building. I don't really see many differences from the observatory. I think the need is just as great, and I think we should be encouraging more filming as well there by eliminating that fee.
Mr. Rosendahl?
You know, I was with the Locations Managers Association, as was Mr. Garcetti over the weekend, and the buzz in the room was what we're doing here, about making it more practical, supportive, and incented to keep film in L.A. Not only is it jobs, but it's a multiplier effect to the whole economy. So whatever we can do in that level is appreciated by the industry. And I got to tell you, people came up to Mr. Garcetti and I, and talked about how the city of Los Angeles is showing that leadership, and this is another demonstration of that leadership. So obviously, I have an "I" vote on this one. Thank you, Madam President. That's a great, 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 great.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, what is action to be taken?
The ordinance is before council.
All right, can you open the roll on that, please? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Next item.
There was a request to take item 11 out of order by the House of Representatives.
Colleagues, we have many items that are coming before us for the March ballot. We're going to have a lot of things that come through. Pension reform earlier today, Ms. Perry's motion on the reserve fund we did a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago. We have electoral reform, Mr. Rizal and myself have presented, which is coming shortly. But today, I'm asking for you to support, and I know Mr. Corretts and Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Reyes seconded this motion and co-presented it with us. And we had support moving forward out of committee, but I'm asking for support for my proposed charter amendment that would ban campaign contributions from city contract bidders. It's a loophole that we had, but right now, when we have city contracts that are before us, there is no blackout period, no ban on contributions from those who are seeking to get our votes on city contracts. And especially during tough economic times, I think the people of Los Angeles need to emulate what we have in other jurisdictions, but close this loophole and be assured that there's accountability over every tax dollar. It puts a wall for our protection as well between contracts and campaign contributions, and puts the onus on those companies to make sure they can't give to us or any other potential candidates or city officials at a time when they have a new contract that moves forward. The goal is a system of transparency and accountability that makes Los Angeles a national leader, and this ban is a significant step in this area. We have, the Ethics Commission has looked at this, we had the city attorney give us some advice on this, and we discussed this in a joint committee meeting. Basically, pretty straightforward. Anything that we would bid on over $100,000, that we would vote on over $100,000, companies that are bidding for those contracts would be prohibited, and it defines the companies themselves, the top owners, and the top management would not be able to give to us for that period, a period of one year after that contract is awarded to the winning company. What it would do is, you know, that impression out there, that money influences everything that we do here, would be taken off the table. I know that we weigh things, we work on them for a long time, but there still is throughout this country, I think, that belief. And for many of the cities that are out there in states, they've had this prohibition for a long time. Metro, for instance, has had that. Many of us serve on the Metro Board, and that prohibits it. Part of the difficulty is knowing who are our contractors around the city. And so one of the things we looked at is where we can maintain a database of this. Outside of this issue, it's something that the coalition of civilian unions have asked for us for a long time, as we contract out a lot of things. They're saying, "We don't even know what contracts we have for collection and for other things." This would begin to move forward in trying to make that happen. I know the Ethics Commission is worried about whether they have the resource to maintain a contractor database, but we would have them fill out a form when they are applying for any city contract over $100,000, informing the Ethics Commission, and they would know. We can't mandate that you put something on our campaign contribution forms, but we can work in enabling ordinance on this with the City Ethics Commission on suggesting, when they do the training, just as we say, "Put down your occupation and your employer," to do something which we could voluntarily, as candidates put on there, say, "Check this off, you know, I am not currently up for a contract in the city of Los Angeles." That protects us. It puts the onus again on them, rather than creating one more rule for us, which is some of the difficulty of our Byzantine but strong campaign laws, is sometimes it takes us years to figure it out. This makes sure that onus is on them. It would be a very clear thing, all contract RFPs that would go out would inform them of that as well, that there's that blackout period as well. And we also decided, I think, to move forward, though you may want to hear the city attorney's advice on this. The city attorney, by the way, did caution us that if we went as far-reaching as Metro, for instance, has right now, which hasn't been challenged, that that goes so far, it probably wouldn't pass constitutional muster, that there are First Amendment rights of folks to be able to do certain things. But there was a gray area between whether or not we could also ban fundraising by those top individuals or companies. Because one way around this, folks would say, "Okay, well, again, the person at the top can't give, but they could then fundraise around them." So we put two things in here. One would be subcontractors. If they meet that threshold, it would also be banned, so there isn't a collection of subcontractors during this period, again, when there is a contract before the city, which is just basic, I think, straightforward, good ethics. And then, secondly, we would ban them from doing fundraising as well. And we could do that in enabling ordinance, but this would be a way to move forward this March in making sure that that perception and that impression out there, that when contracts are up, would somehow be able to be bought and paid for, would be taken off the table. So I ask you for your support of this today. The Ethics Commission City Attorney is available here for any questions, but I ask you to support the committee report on this today and move that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Cardenas?
So, Madam President, I'd like to ask some clarifying questions to the maker of the motion. Can I do that on my time?
Yes.
Can he answer on my time?
Mr. City Attorney, is that permitted under the rules? All right, go ahead, please, and it's your time.
Thank you very much. It is my time.
Don't fight.
Please be quick, Mr. Garcetti. Now, as this motion is before us, it applies to the principals of the bidders, or it applies to the principals and employees of the bidders?
Why don't we ask the, I guess, the CLA to come forward to describe--
Okay, so while we're waiting for them to come forward--
I think it's a threshold of 30%. You have to be an owner of 30%. It's the--
So basically, if you're an employee slash and a principal, that it would apply to you?
Right, I mean, obviously, if it's like Microsoft, there's 10,000, you know, 100,000 employees. It's not anybody who works there. It's if you're the deciding member, the liaison for a contract with the city. So like, you know, let's say Microsoft says you're the lead negotiator for City of L.A., that dings you. If it's one of the top, you know, people at Microsoft, or somebody who's one of the top owners.
Okay, all right. Thank you. But also--
Just in case.
Who gets, if a contribution comes from one of these restricted individuals, as it's written right now, who gets in trouble? Is it the receiver of the contribution? Who gets in trouble with the Ethics Commission? Is it the receiver of the contribution, the contributor, or both?
As it's written right now, it is the person who is making the contribution. And the penalty for that would be they would be prohibited from having any other contract with the city for a specified amount of time, depending on if they are a repeat violator or not. One year the first time, two years the second time, four years the third time, if that were to happen. We can strengthen that or not. That was the kind of compromise we worked out in council, but you have a, you can't apply for any--
Now, this precludes them from giving a contribution to anybody who's running for a city office, or only stand, giving a contribution to a standing member who's running for reelection?
Both, those that are standing and those that are running for an empty seat or are non-incumbents.
So basically, if somebody's on the ballot, running for office, and they're trying to raise money, all of those individuals who are running, whether they're a current member or want to be a member of the elected body or individuals in the city, that contributor is precluded from giving a contribution to either of those candidates?
Yes, that is written, yes.
Okay. Also, one of the things that unfortunately is a glaring problem whenever we restrict, 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 in small or in large part or what have you, is the Meg Whitmans of the world. Or in this next mayoral race, there's already rumors that perhaps there are some billionaires who are going to be running for mayor. But one of the biggest problems is, whether they get a contribution from that person or not, nothing precludes them from sitting down with that potential precluded contributor and actually having a meeting of the minds, agreeing with them that they'll be their favorite candidate of a company when they become the mayor or what have you. There's nothing that precludes that. And one of the things that unfortunately is focused on here is the contribution, but there's nothing in the law that could actually preclude somebody to actually have a relationship with that individual, and actually show some favor with or without a contribution. But unfortunately, it just puts further and further away people who grow up in like a poor community like Pacoima, who want to become a council member but don't have the resources of their own, and unfortunately, have to go ahead and get 100 contributions, 200 contributions, 500 contributions, as much as 1,000 contributions, to compete in a competitive race to unseat an incumbent or to actually take an open seat. And I'll push my button again, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Kocorian.
Just a quick comment. You know, I'm very depressed to see how America and campaign finance reform has been in the toilet. I mean, it's a disaster. Right now, as we're getting close to a week from an election, there's hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars that are being pumped into campaigns with no accountability, thanks to the Supreme Court and its irresponsible action, frankly. And they should be brought to task for that. I'm glad our president, in his inauguration, made a comment about the Supreme Court and how they acted. Well, here we are in the great city of Los Angeles, and the issues that come before us are very serious for quality of life, for community. When I was running for reelection, you know, everybody figured, "Oh, Rosendahl's going to win, so might as well give him some money." And thank God, I had Steve Kaufman on my payroll to nurse through the monies that came in, and found some monies that came from the same person and sent it back. There's clever games always being played, and people trying to buy the politician. I've had enough of this. This is a step in the right direction. This doesn't answer all the questions that we need to do. But for God's sake, folks, we have to make sure that the integrity of who we are around this table stays intact. And as you get closer to an election, you know the surge, "Oh, my God, we got to help this one, or help that one." It'd be just nice if we get to a point where anybody who does any business with the city, six months before, six months after, stays away. I'd like to see those who do business with the city forever and after also not give money, but that's another day. But this is a good step. That's why I second Mr. Garcetti's motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you. When you get a contract with the city, are you required to get any forms signed off, or to be familiar with a variety of laws that we have in Los Angeles?
Part of the proposal before this, before this body, under this proposal, is to, when you are submitting a bid, you're required to note that you are aware of this requirement.
But if I get a bid for the city, like a board of public works bid, and I'm supposed to go over to the clerk's office? Karen, maybe you're a former clerk, you could ask her these questions. What kind of movement do they have to make to get a bid, to go around and have someone sign off? That they have insurance? That they have all those things that they're bonded? Does anyone know that process? A VAC, all right, finally, I got a VAC to the table. All right.
Yes, we have an extensive--
For the record, your name, sir?
Avakatayen, CLA's office. As you, many of you may know, we have a very extensive and somewhat bureaucratic system where contractors have to provide a wide range of information. Now, I don't know all the detail of each information they have to provide.
Would it be suggestive, you're a pro around here for so many years, that they'd have to visit the 23rd floor, or whatever the floor the ethics is on, that they would then show their intent to sign off on this new rule? How would you do that? How would you physically do that? Because I think there's some points where people, people who live in this city sometimes participate in these. General, L.A., maybe you could have an answer to that.
Okay, well, in terms of who's responsible for the forms, it depends on the awarding authority. If it's a public works contract, it's contract administration. If it's a personal services contract, who's ever issuing the contract needs to collect all the documentation, that complies with all city requirements. And in this instance, the RFP would go out, it would indicate that the requirement is there, and when the bid is submitted, they would have to indicate that they're aware of it and comply with it. And then there is also the discussion of notifying folks about when somebody has, is in the bidding process or contracting with the city. There was discussion in committee about who the clearinghouse should be, and there was a desire from the committee that the Ethics Commission be responsible for disseminating the information about who is falling under this restriction.
The question on the 25th floor is the Ethics Commission. Is it possible, if there's a form in this bid document, or whatever people have, that then they do their circulation, which they do? I've seen people walk around City Hall, several contractors and others, that they would have to visit the 24th floor and get a copy of what they require, and then that someone just signed that they got it? So you have that as a document? Because I think it's important for people to know these rules.
When they get the bid, they will get this as part of the bid package.
And will they sign off on it?
And they will have to sign off it and submit it, and then the discussion is having Ethics be responsible for letting all of you know when somebody is falling under this restriction.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, I support this measure, I was proud to second it. I think it's an important step in eliminating the public's perception that campaign contributions might influence the city's contracting decisions. But I do have a question, and that is this. We have some of the strongest ethics laws in this city anywhere in the country. We have some of the tightest restrictions on campaign contributions to elected officials. And that's good, but is there anything in this proposal or in existing law that would prevent a party who was bidding for a contract from making a contribution to an independent expenditure campaign committee?
I believe that this proposal actually does cover that. If there's any, oh, the city attorney should be able to.
Heather Holt for the Ethics Commission. It would not cover contributions to committees that make independent expenditures. It would apply to contributions to committees that are controlled by, city committees that are controlled by candidates or elected office holders.
Right, and so the independent expenditure committees that have arisen and flourished so much, which, you know, sometimes go by names like the Council for Good Government, or the Committee for Puppy Dogs and Apple Pie, could take unlimited contributions from parties interested in contracting with the city, and then use those funds to campaign either for or against a sitting member of this council. Isn't that right?
That's correct, based on case law. We currently have laws on the books that limit contributions to those types of committees, but that is a subject of another ballot measure repeal, because the Supreme Court has ruled that those are unacceptable.
Right, and I just wanted to highlight that issue again, because I think that it's important that the public understand that all of the restrictions that we put on campaigns that are, you know, run by candidates are becoming increasingly irrelevant and even moot by the continuing unlimited rise of special interest money that finances independent expenditure campaigns entirely outside of the control of our ethics reform laws. And so I again want to keep reiterating that, because I think it's important that this council do everything that it can to try to rein in the undue influence of those independent expenditure campaigns. And I hope that we'll continue to press for increasing transparency and accountability and reporting requirements for those IE committees as we move forward.
Mr. Cardenas?
Sorry?
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. See, all I wanted to do is make sure that the public and everybody understands that when you really get right down to it, because the Constitution of the United States, we can only trim around the edges when it comes to reduction of contributions, reducing the perception of impropriety and things of that nature. But when you really get right down to it, every time we do that, maybe some of the public might pay attention and actually feel a little bit better. But at the same time, I believe what we're doing is we're curtailing true democracy by creating an uneven playing field when it comes to people who can self-fund and finance.
who can self-fund and finance, and that's the one thing that I think that anybody on any side of the coin that wants to talk about campaign finance reform can agree that the Constitution and the U.S. Supreme Court is never likely going to say that a rich individual cannot use their own money for their own campaign. And once we have that backdrop always staring us in the face, anytime somebody wants to compete with an individual who has either unlimited funds or plenty of funds to dedicate personally, where they don't have to go out and get fundraising activity done, it creates an unlevel playing field. And that's one of the things that unfortunately I just wanted to point out, that every time we do this campaign finance reform stuff, whether we put it to the voters or the Ethics Commission decides to tighten the reins or create higher penalties to deter people from making mistakes or what have you, the bottom line is, rich people sit there and just laugh and say, well, maybe it's time I run for office because the competition is really falling behind. And in my opinion, just because somebody's rich, it doesn't mean that they're the best person to represent Oil Heights or Pacoima or what have you. They might be great for Bel Air or Brentwood because maybe that's where they live, but maybe they don't even care to even know what's going on on the other side of town where people might have a drastically different income, where schoolchildren deal with drastically different issues, where the sidewalks and the streetlights are drastically underfunded instead of what's going on the other side of town or what have you, and that's one of the problems that I have with this. But with all due respect, I'm going to go ahead and vote for it because this is the kind of thing that, when you ask a politician, when did you stop beating your wife? That's a question that's unanswerable, even though it might not be true. If somebody votes against this as a standing elected official, they can be labeled very, very easily that they're against campaign finance reform and that they would like to take contributions from people who actually get contracts with the city and they'd rather not be deterred from doing so. So I'm going to go ahead and vote for this because we're actually put in somewhat of an impossible situation as a standing elected official, because by voting against this, it's way too easy for the simplistic-minded individual to try to attack a standing elected official for voting against something like this. But I just wanted to point out, it is something nice, but at the same time, it's really ignoring a lot more things that unfortunately we can't fix.
Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, this is sort of deja vu for me because when I ran for mayor in 2006, this was one of the primary issues that I raised. In fact, the proposal I had introduced did not restrict it to contractors for more than 100,000, it was even less. So I would urge that the restrictions be even tighter on these particular kinds of contributions, I would support that. But having said that, this is the matter that's before us today, and I'm happy to join with Mr. Garcetti and the four members who are seconding this motion to ensure that this is just something that should have been done a long time ago. I agree with Mr. Cardenas as well, that without doing something, without wealthy billionaires jumping in the race, it's not really going to solve the problem. We know that we had Mayor Reardon, who I think contributed $10 million to his campaign, which is the largest sum in the history of elections in Los Angeles. Of course, I promised Mr. Smith I wouldn't mention Meg Whitman, but, so I won't. But we also have on the horizon at least two billionaire potential candidates that may run for mayor, and it's sad to think that people can buy an election, and of course, one gubernatorial candidate has demonstrated that she probably can't, but the people of Los Angeles need to be protected against that. And until we protect them against somebody buying their own election with $10 million or I would bet $25 million in the next election, we're really not changing campaign financing significantly. But I do believe this is an important measure, not so much because of the election results, but because of the voting results on a day-to-day basis. And so I'm very strong supporter of this, as I was four years ago.
Mr. Labons, and then--
I just wanted to stand up and, Mr. City Attorney, I did work for Richard Reardon. I think the mayor, who had a long career in this history as a public commissioner on the record parks, put his passion into Los Angeles, and whatever his success was, he exercised that. I think all those things did need to be considered, but I know Richard Reardon cared about children, cared about people. Many of the things that we're doing now were because of what Richard Reardon had a vision for, and he did have the good luck and the good fortune to be a successful businessperson, and he used that, but he also contributed greatly to the welfare of this city. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you. I rise from the committee for Puppy Dogs and Apple Pie, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Kocorian. It's one of the best groups to ever be out there. You know, you got to start with puppy dogs, okay? You got to draw the line somewhere. And I've enjoyed this conversation, a couple of things. We often go round and round about this. We know that IEs and individually wealthy people are a force in politics that has to be contended with, but Mr. Kocorian sits there as evidence, for instance, that people can spend a lot on an IE and you can beat them. Ms. Whitman may prove you can spend a record amount and might lose. Mr. Bloomberg had the lowest margin ever when he established the record. You can talk to Mr. Chekki and Ms. Harmon and Mr. Reardon when he ran for governor and Mr. Simon. You know, there's a whole trail of people with a lot of money who spend a lot of money and who lose, and there's also a lot of IEs that spend millions of dollars and lose too. So I agree with the analysis, but I'm not ready to give up, and I'm actually quite hopeful that sometimes people do see through that and they do understand. We're not here to speak about the state elections this time, but I think there's plenty of evidence. I also would say, and I appreciate everyone's support, you know, let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. We do need to change that, we need a Supreme Court that changes, but this isn't just to feel good, this is actually something that will do good. Voters will feel differently. When they know that those donations are there, every article that gets written, first thing is how much is given to each person? That happened before, it will protect us too, and it's a small portion of what most people raise around here. The folks who introduced this come from all sorts of socioeconomic backgrounds. We've all shown around here that we can go to, and if folks aren't satisfied with this, I have step two for you. It's been endorsed by a few of us around here, but we can't seem to get to eight votes yet, which is full public financing. Now, we don't have to fund it in a bad budget year like this year, but at a certain point, if you want something that will answer the IEs, won't be able to do it, you know, at any level, won't be able to take a billionaire and match him or her, but what could be designed is people get independent money that is full public financing, as we have with our matching funds today, but you get full public financing for a certain threshold, and then as more and more money is spent against you, we can answer that with more and more money by taking certain caps off. We've seen that happen in working states where there's a disincentive for IEs to go, where there's a disincentive for wealthy individuals to spend their own money because they know it's going to be answered with this public money. That is, to me, the best reform it could do, but let's take a good step forward, let's follow Mr. Alarcon's lead, let's, you know, Mr. Hahn also talked about this, we had some momentum on this, but I think this is the time to do it. We certainly have seen that recently, we should move forward. Just two quick questions, in terms of lowering, what is the threshold for what we vote on for contracts? Is it 100,000, Mr. CLA?
It's either $100,000 for a contract with three years or any contract that's over five years, generally is such a rule.
Okay. And that's why there's 100,000. I agree, we could go lower, I think it's the easiest way for us to build that donor database. Is there a way to draft this so if we want to, by ordinance, we could go lower, but we set the threshold initially at 100,000 or something?
Oh, certainly, depending on how you craft it, you can craft that there will be an enabling ordinance afterwards that has different requirements.
Okay. And then the last piece in terms of what constitutes a contract and how do we identify, and should subcontractors be included? I would include subcontractors at the same threshold. I think what, the city attorney's going to have to draft something here, so we need, she needs to know kind of precisely what we want. I think part of that, we should speak clearly today about, you know, what level of subcontractor. Subcontractors at 100,000 or above, I think that's a good level. There was some talk about a certain percentage, but if you had a $200,000 contract and the percentage was 30, it would only be a $60,000 contract. Is that a good, clean way, Madam City Attorney, for us to draft this, if we just say 100,000 for contractors and subcontractors? Or would you recommend something else? And then I'll make sure we stand for the record your opinion about whether or not we should do fundraising too. So don't worry, we'll get to that too.
Deputy City Attorney Rene Stottle, I, we need to talk a little bit more internally with city staff that are involved with contracting, but I think setting a monetary threshold is one step, but it's possible that that might seem, I'm concerned that there might be some large contracts where a $100,000 subcontractor might actually be a de minimis amount.
Because there's like a, let's say, a $1 billion sewer project, you got $100,000 worth of staples or something?
So it's possible that maybe it's a combination of a monetary or a percentage threshold?
Okay. Well, why don't you come back to us with a recommendation, working with the CLA? We do get to vote on this when it comes back, folks, and, you know, if there's a recommendation that it be at least $100,000 and it has to be at least 30% or 10% or whatever, let us know, and I'm fine with whatever recommendation you have there. Lastly, city attorney did say, look, for sure we'll uphold, well, not for sure, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we're more likelihood of it being upheld if it's just a ban on direct contributions. I think it's important to put fundraising in there, though. I think if we go too far, it can be thrown out, but that's a fight worth fighting for us to also say, because otherwise, it really is quite symbolic. You know, if somebody at the top can't give, but they can raise as much money as they want for you, let's make sure they're not in the act of doing that. Let somebody challenge us on that, I know you'll do a great job defending us, but it would be my recommendation, I just wanted to make sure you heard that on the record in fairness to our city attorney. I don't know if you want to add anything to it?
Just a little bit, as the council president has identified and we have previously advised, there is very little case law on a fundraising ban in this instance. Actually, the most recent case struck down a fundraising ban, it was in the Second Circuit, and it was--
There's something much broader than even just the ban, right? It said--
It was a fairly broad ban on soliciting contributions, et cetera. What, the language we've been looking at for a prohibited fundraising ban here, in our view, is also broad. The Second Circuit indicated that not only would they subject that type of a restriction to a higher level of scrutiny because it's actual speech, but that they weren't certain that there was a compelling governmental interest that would be served, and further that, at least in the Connecticut provision, which was a broad prohibition, that it was not narrowly crafted. It was not narrowly crafted in terms of, it was a broad prohibition on solicitation of contributions from anyone, not just contractor employees or subcontractors, or it wasn't limited to only large fundraising--
So it was almost all employees, like if Microsoft had a contract, it was all Microsoft employees? Is that part of what it had?
No, the prohibition was on contractors and agents, what we're talking about here, including family members, and it prohibited all of those people from soliciting contributions.
And this, that wouldn't have family members in it, as currently--
They--
So ours wouldn't have family members?
Ours doesn't have family members.
So there's a little bit of restriction there.
So because of that case, and because it's the most recent case and follows the Supreme Court's case, we have a lot of concern that this type of a provision would not be upheld if we were in litigation.
I know the Ethics Commission had a different opinion, was very strong about that. You don't have to worry about chiming in, I think people know the issues on it, but why don't you, when you come back, if you want, just in last fairness to you, one of the things I know you talked about in committee was, New York seemed to be stronger because you could do some level of giving that was a percentage, they didn't ban it outright. Just on raising, why don't you give us two options, on a strict ban on raising, and then also, they still couldn't give as an individual even a percentage, but perhaps they could collectively raise at $500 or something like that? If that makes you feel, you know, that it would be upheld?
Many, there are a variety of restrictions out there in other jurisdictions. Many of the restrictions are not actual bans on contributions, but a lower contribution limit. New York City, for example, has a lower contribution limit from contractors and those seeking to do business with New York City. It's 10, the contribution limit in New York City is 10% of the regular contribution limit. I would note that I recently found out that the New York City restriction, which was upheld in the district court level, has been appealed, and so we expect the Second Circuit to rule on their restriction. Their restriction is only a contribution limit, it doesn't deal with fundraising.
Okay. Well, but on the fundraising piece, if you could bring us with both options, just on fundraising, not on the contribution, okay? And I ask you for your support. Thank you, Collins.
Thank you very much. No more speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, what do we have before us?
The Rules and Elections Committee report is before council.
All right, no amendments?
No, ma'am.
As amended?
Options on the way back.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, could you say that again into the mic? Mr. Garcetti?
Sorry?
Can you say it again into the mic?
I just asked on the second part of the ban, which bans fundraising, I asked the city attorney to prepare us two options, one which would outright ban fundraising by these individuals and entities as well, and one that would give a de minimis amount so that they couldn't raise more than, say, $500 total. So she has advised us that possibly, if challenged, that's one of the areas that could be more vulnerable, but it'd be less vulnerable if we had some sort of level of raising that was allowed, but a very de minimis level. So I just asked for that, and we can decide when it comes back.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yep.
So a second?
We can draft two options when it comes back to us.
Mr. Kocorian made a second. All right, so this is voting, as amended by Mr. Garcetti, seconded by Mr. Kocorian. Would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Item nine was called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon? Item nine?
Oh, it's due place for stopping. Madam President, this item is a-- Let me make sure I have the right item. Oh, here we go. Members, this is also related to the film, for our opportunities to improve filming in Los Angeles. This is relative to a sales tax refund for purchases made for filming, requires that if 75% of the film is shot in Los Angeles, they would be able to get a sales tax refund. I do have to introduce a verbal amendment because it was felt that after the report was out of committee, it was determined that we need to prepare an ordinance, so I would add an amendment to request the city attorney to prepare an ordinance in order to implement this program. This is a simple idea, it says that if you're filming 75% of your film in Los Angeles, that we should give you a sales tax refund because of all the activity that's generated around filming, we should easily recoup the loss specific to the sales tax refund. So we are asking the Office of Finance to create a program for implementation of the 1% sales tax rebate, have the Office of Finance develop procedures that would prevent fraud and abuse. I do want to say that the Office of Finance anticipates that having an incentive program will have an increase in direct in city spending and that the fiscal impact will be beneficial to the city's economy. So this is also one of the 19 recommendations that I referred to in the earlier item that we voted on last October. We're moving forward with this, and it contributes, again, to creating more jobs in Los Angeles film productions, but also increasing local spending, and is part of our general push and inertia, I should say, to ensure that we do everything possible that is reasonable to improve our opportunities to bring filming to Los Angeles. So with that, I would ask for your support on the verbal amendment. Do I need a second on that? I need a second? Oh, it's my report, so it's a friendly amendment. So I don't need a second, but I would ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. There are no additional speakers in the queue on this. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item? Mr. Smith?
Briefly, if I could ask items 18, 19, 23, and 24 to go forthwith, those are LAPD grants.
Mr. Smith, you said 19, 23, and 24, forthwith?
18, 19, 23, 24.
Okay, 18, 19, 23, and 24, forthwith for Mr. Smith.
Item 20 was called special by Councilmember Labons.
Mr. Labons? Mr. Labons on item 20?
Yes, have a good--
All right, why don't we circle back on that one? What's after 20?
Next item called special was item 25 by Councilmember Cardenas.
Councilmember Cardenas?
Thank you very much, councilmembers. I just think it's appropriate that we thank Nancy Heigl and also, more famously to us is Catherine Heigl, and basically what they did is they announced-- And basically what they did is they announced just over a month ago that they are committing to spay and neuter programs throughout the LA city and county area, a million dollars of their own money, they pledged, to help spay and neutering. And also, on that day, they announced and gave, physically gave, $50,000 to programs within the city, just to kick off this wonderful activity about spay and neutering. Councilmembers, I want to thank all of you for being dedicated and committed to reaching and getting to the point where we're a no-kill city, and many of you have carried legislation, and you're actually adopting animals in these chambers, cats and dogs, et cetera. We're doing everything that we can, but it's this kind of private effort that is going to actually move forward better than any other program we've ever seen, because basically what they've done is, they actually announced a nationwide program where they're going to try to harness and help every single dog and cat-loving organization, not-for-profit, for-profit, municipalities, et cetera. And basically, what they've created is a campaign that's going to harness all of that, and then so we can be much more efficient, we can help each other, and walk through this at every single opportunity to reduce the killing of animals. And so it's called the Compassion for Animals Campaign, and it's something that started right here in Los Angeles. We should be very, very proud of that. And also, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank this wonderful family that has actually started a not-for-profit foundation, and they're dedicating a million dollars of their own money to kick this off. And that's a wonderful start, and we have a lot of other organizations that are showing interest in making sure that they partner with them. So I want to thank the Heigl family for this wonderful opportunity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cardenas. No further speakers in the queue on that item. So would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item 26 was called special for cards.
All right, let me see. Clyde Williams, Dr. Clyde Williams, are you still present? Doesn't look like Dr. Williams is here in the chamber. Looks like he's gone. All right, Dr. Williams is not present at this time, so there's no speakers in the queue, so please open the roll. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item 38, called special by Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon, we do have a card on that. Would you like that person to go first?
If I could, I'd like to make my comments and then have them speak. It's actually the representative from Senator Alex Padilla's office who are partnering with us in this effort. This is related to the Children's Museum. This is by way of not only an update, but also to bring you good news, not great news, we're not finished, so I don't want to give anybody the wrong impression. But this is definitely positive news. Since November 2009, we have had full control of this facility, 57,000 square feet, called the Children's Museum, and Environmental Awareness Center at Hanson Dam. The facility's still in good shape. We provided with your support, 24/7 security, and it is used, to some extent, for film shooting to date. However, our goal was to stay with the plan, to develop a museum for the people of Los Angeles. This would be a children's museum. So what we are doing today is moving forward with an idea and an operational plan. So let me tell you that we are in very close discussions, and more than discussions, they've actually submitted, written proposal, not a proposal, but a description of how they think this might work. And what I'm speaking of is the Discovery Science Center in Santa Ana. This is a local nonprofit operator with a great track record, and we are in discussions with them, with our city team, about how they may take over the children's museum and make it function as it was intended to do. They are already in compliance, in essence, with the idea of the children's museum in many respects, and it wouldn't take much for them to adjust, to manage this. So the original plan called for a nonprofit entity to run it, but obviously, they went bankrupt, so we assumed that responsibility. And I'm here to tell you that today's action would enable us to apply for a grant application with a letter of understanding, or something to that effect, with the Discovery Science Center in Santa Ana, and this would enable them to provide $7 million in funding, should they be approved by the state, to develop the exhibits for the museum. We still have other things to do, but assuming this moves forward, if we get acceptance from the state, I can tell you that we do need operational budget, but this takes us a huge way down the road. It also solidifies our relationship in a way that makes us all committing to working together on this idea. So this is great news for the people of Los Angeles, especially those kids that will enjoy this facility. So with that, I would like to ask Senator Padilla's staff member to step forward with a letter from Senator Padilla, if that's okay with the chair.
Uh, yeah, you're almost out of time, but yeah, we can do that very quickly. Are you Mr. Negrete?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Roberto Negrete with State Senator Alex Padilla's office. Senator wanted me to read his statement into the record this afternoon. I strongly support the MOU between the City of Los Angeles and the Discovery Science Center that is before you today. This partnership will provide the City of Los Angeles an opportunity to pursue $7 million in Proposition 84 funding from the state of California for the development of the Children's Museum Environmental Awareness Center at Hanson Dam. I have always believed in the development of the children's museum in the San Fernando Valley. I feel strongly that we need to do everything in our power to complete the project and make it a reality for the children of Los Angeles. The Proposition 84 Nature Education Facilities Grant Program is a golden opportunity and a perfect fit with the long-established goals of the children's museum. The partnership with Discovery Science Center, a highly successful, nationally-recognized nonprofit, is both strategic and smart. Discovery Science Center has the creativity, experience, and leadership necessary to move us forward with confidence. This partnership not only strengthens our application, it provides us the greatest opportunity for sustainable, long-term success. Once again, this is a great opportunity, and I respectfully request your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon.
With that, I would like to request your support, and by supporting this, you would authorize the grant application, and also beginning negotiating terms with the Discovery Science Center. And I did fail to mention one thing, this is critical. One of the things that Discovery Science Center does best is ensure that their program, their exhibits, are tied to school curriculum in the state of California. That's exactly what they would intend to do here at the children's museum, and so it's a great program. I'm only hopeful that we can see this all the way through, but this takes us a long way down the road and gives hope where hope had diminished.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. There's no additional cards or speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, you wish to go back to item 20? Councilmember Labonge is now in chambers.
Mr. Labonge, item 20?
On this item here?
I'm sorry, you wanted forthwith on the previous item.
Forthwith on 20?
We're doing 20 now for you.
Okay, I'll make it real quick. Just change the numbers, if you would, Mr. Clerk, read it into the record.
I believe the was brought up as the account number on recommendation one should read 008R.
Ask for an aye vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Open the roll on that item, please. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
All right, thank you. That'll go forthwith, as did the previous item by Mr. Alarcon. Next item?
Item 39 was called special for cards.
All right, we have a card from Dr. Clyde Williams. So, Dr. Williams, you're here. Okay, so you're up on item 39.
Excuse me for a second. Thank you. Forthwith on both those items? Aye, aye. Good afternoon. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4015 Fire Road, El Serrano, Northeast LA. Something that we can support, mansions, or mannerizations. Why should we have them? There was one that was proposed to the building and safety of 72,000 square feet. Wow, that's a big one. There's a lot of these. Where do they go? Into those areas that are most commonly also designated as very high fire severity areas. Do they protect themselves? No, they don't even comply with the requirements of the brush fire clearance of the LA Fire Department, and for some reason, they don't seem to enforce it around those manners. In Northeast LA, in CD14, in El Serrano, we've had some, 7,000 square feet, not as big as the ones further west, but we still have the same problem. They are just too big. And to have a sunset clause on it every so often, hey, just make it permanent, because the hillsides need protection from these monsters, and the communities and neighborhoods also need protection. Make it permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. No speakers in the queue, no additional cards. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Item 40 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. Labonge? Item 40?
No, I just got clarification on this. We have clarification, members? Mr. Corretts? Mr. Corcoran? On this issue here, this is 40 and 39.
Vote. So what are you asking?
Because I wanted an explanation from the clerk on the difference between 40 and 39.
Mr. Clerk, are you able to respond to Mr.?
Would have to defer to the maker of the motion, who is not in chambers today. He's excused. I don't know if Planning Department could possibly-
Um, is there someone here from-
No, Charlie's here.
If there's someone from Planning who can answer Mr. Labonge's question, we can deal with this issue today.
It's a nice tie you got, Charlie.
Now, Mr. Labonge, this is on your time.
Thank you.
On my time?
Item number 39 is, there's a sunset clause, oh, excuse me, it's the other way around. Item 39 basically takes the sunset clause that is currently in the mansionization ordinance for the flatlands of the city, and proposes that the city attorney, who currently has the hillside mansionization before them, include a clause which would terminate the sunset clause from the baseline mansionization ordinance, since the hillside ordinance is going through the city council. And item number 40, basically because I believe on sometime this week, the sunset clause would be activated in the baseline mansionization ordinance, includes, continues that ordinance through February, as the city attorney, who is currently involved in litigation, who is working on this ordinance, the hillside ordinance, doesn't think he's going to get to it until perhaps the end of the year, to bring it back before the city council, so...
So it'll be back before February, before the next-
We are certainly hoping for that.
Thank you very much. Ask for an aye vote.
I was just going to try to explain the same thing, but hopefully that was an adequate and clear explanation.
Oh, I see.
All right, Mr. Corcoran?
I see. I think I'm fine, thanks.
All right, Mr. Corcoran, take a pass. Um, okay, anybody else in the queue? Mr. Corcoran's going to pass. Anybody else? Mr. Cardenas?
I can't hear you.
Okay, that's it then. Open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Council has motions for posting on referral?
Motions are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
All right, members, would you please rise for announcements? I'm sorry, please rise. Does anybody have any announcements, and then we'll rise for adjourning motions? Mr. Weesar?
Madam President, I just want to quickly give a big thank you to our fire department and our police department, our crisis response team. And yesterday, we had a horrible accident, as many of you may have seen in the news, on First and Soto Street, where a car ran a red light, hit a pedestrian, then hit a bus that flipped over with a number of students inside the bus. Many of the students were rushed off to the hospital, and many of them were taken to the local police station so that they could meet with their parents. It was a quick response, and it was a very efficient response, and thankfully, many of the students did not get hurt or die, but I think the quick action of our law enforcement officials and our emergency personnel made a bad situation the best that it can be in those circumstances. I just want to give them a big thank you, they did a wonderful job yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, I just want to announce that the Jobs and Business Development Committee will begin in about five minutes, as soon as I can get up there.
Great. All right, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. It's with great sadness I announce the passing of Porfirio Bernal, who passed away on October 15, 2010, and he was born on July 8, 1950, and he died from kidney cancer. Porfirio Bernal was born in Ayutla, Jalisco, on July 8, 1950. During his youth, he worked by his father's side in the fields in order to help provide food and shelter for the family. On August 17, 1973, Porfirio Bernal married Emma Esquivel and moved to Sun Valley, California, in 1994. Here, they had two children for whom Porfirio dedicated his life to be an exemplary figure for them. He shared with his son his passion for outdoors, starting in August during the hunting season. Porfirio and his son, Porfirio's brothers and nephews, enjoyed weekends in the mountains. Porfirio seized these opportunities to spend quality time with his son, and in his own way, teach his son to become a responsible human being. Porfirio worked for waste management in Sun Valley for over 30 years as a mechanic, and thanks to his good humor and dependability, Porfirio earned the respect of his colleagues. In February of 2009, Porfirio was diagnosed with kidney cancer, and for over a year and a half, he valiantly and faithfully went through his aggressive chemotherapy treatments. On October 15, 2010, Porfirio lost his battle to cancer. He left his, he left his family a strong message, always confront your battles with faith and dignity. He survived by, he survived by his wife, Emma Bernal, his children, Ernesto Bernal, Gabriela Mojica, grandchildren, Alonso, Elizabeth, Marissa, Sandra, and Jessica, and four brothers and three sisters, and many, many dear friends and family. The memorial services were held on Thursday, October 21, 2010, and Porfirio is a good human being and related to one of my staff members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of entertainer James Solomon Burke, who died in the Netherlands, October 10, of natural causes. He was born in Philadelphia, 1940. At the age of seven, he was already earning a reputation as a boy wonder preacher for sermonizing in the church. By his teens, he was hosting his own gospel radio show and recording on the Apollo label, but his career fell apart for a short while because of a dispute with his manager. He then returned to school and joined a family mortuary business. In 1960, Jerry Rexler signed him to Atlantic Records, where he enjoyed a string of hits, including Everybody Needs Somebody to Love, which the Rolling Stones covered in their second album. Burke also found success with the song Got to Get You Off My Mind, which he initially inspired to write after hearing about the fatal 1964 shooting of his friend Sam Cooke. Solomon enjoyed less success in subsequent decades, except in 1980, he recorded Everybody Needs Somebody to Love, which was featured prominently in the Blues, 1980 Blues Brothers movie. He also, in 2001, was inducted to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and the following year, he released Joe Henry-produced Don't Give Up on Me, which won a Grammy for the Best Contemporary Blues Album and proved that he was still a success. According to his official website, he passed away in Amsterdam, arriving there to appear before a sold-out show. He survived by a host of family and friends. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Bob Kuluos, 67, longtime Democratic political activist and the first mayorial press secretary to Tom Bradley. He died October 12, in Eugene, Oregon, of cancer. He was named Bradley's first press secretary after Bradley was elected in 1973. He served also as the media director doing the campaign and assistant press secretary during Bradley's unsuccessful 1969 mayorial bid against Sam Yorde. He was born in '43 in LA, graduated Santa Monica High School, attended Santa Monica College, served in the US military, and in Vietnam in '66, '67, before working on political campaigns. He also ran, or was involved with such presidential runs as Senator Howard Hughes of Iowa, Frank Church of Idaho, George McGovern of South Dakota. He also worked on several California campaigns, Senator John Burton and Alan Cranston, survived by his wife Pamela Eaton and daughter Molly.
Mr. Rosenthal, thank you for that. Second, any other adjourning motions? If I have one quick one, in memory of Roberta Joyce Miripolsky, she was 81 years old, a beloved wife, mother, and grandmother. Born in Chicago in 1929, moved to Los Angeles as a teenager, and met her husband- as a teenager, and met her husband Bert Miripolsky, and remained married for the next 61 years. Her spirit and attitude were undeniably positive, never an unkind word for anyone. She was an eternal optimist and inspiration and loved by all who met her. She was able to live in many foreign lands because of her husband's career in the American Foreign Service. She and her family moved back to Los Angeles in 1971, and she remained here ever since. She always loved Los Angeles, and whenever given a chance, was its number-one cheerleader, an attitude not lost on her family. She survived by her husband Bert and children, Andre Miripolsky, whose artwork you will probably see in and about downtown, Delia, Eban, Serena, daughter-in-law Claudia, and grandson Morgan. She will be remembered and deeply missed. So without further ado, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll. Meeting is adjourned.